Start the recording. Great, thank you very much. So, welcome everyone to the January ten meeting of the Systems Law Enforcement Review Board. Welcome. Happy two thousand twenty-three. Pastor Strix, if you could take role, please?
Yes, Eileen Delaney?
I'm here.
Mary Ann Pintar?
She's here, but she's muted.
Okay.
Sorry.
Robert, okay, thank you. That's fine. I'm here. Andrew Hayes?
Here.
Dr. Arlie Brown? Okay, Nadia Keen Ayub?
Present.
Thank you. Bonnie Kink?
Here.
Thank you. Ariana Federico Mondrago? Tim Ware? And G.I. Wilson?
Here.
And Dr. Brown just came on the screen. Did you get that, Pastor Strix?
I'm here.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And number two, our agenda item is public comments. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Parker.
We have several questions to speak. The first one will be Karen Remus. Ms. Remus?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me, Mr. Parker?
I can. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, club members. My name is Karen Remus, and I'm a resident of zip code nine-two-one-three-one. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. Attachments E, F, G, H, I, J, and K to tonight's agenda each contain responses from the Sheriff's Department to multiple policy recommendations made by Club last year. The Sheriff's Department did not accept any of those recommendations. The Sheriff's Department's recalcitrance is set against a backdrop of soaring in custody deaths, multiple data-driven studies showing racial discriminatory policing, and corruption and other bad acts within the department, including a former sheriff captain who pled guilty to dealing firearms without a federal license and was sentenced to prison. Club members, you have very generously chosen to serve our community by being part of this law enforcement oversight body. However, you only have the powers afforded to you under your charter, and unfortunately, those are quite simply not enough. Now is the time to ask the state of California to intervene. Early last year, after the state auditor conducted its audit at the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, the auditor stated, quote, "And why do the ongoing risk to inmate safety, the Sheriff's Department's inadequate response to deaths, and the lack of effective independent oversight? We believe that the legislature must take action to ensure that the Sheriff's Department implements meaningful changes," end quote. That statement was made almost a year ago. Club members, now is the time for you to go up the chain of command and call for backup. People are dying. Please prevent a repeat of two thousand twenty-two by taking a public stand and asking the state to step in to help reform the Sheriff's Department. Invite the Board of Supervisors to join you in making this request. Thank you for your service and for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Dr. Fishman, Darwin Fishman. Are you there? Dr. Fishman?
I'm here. Hello, can you hear me?
We can now. Your time starts now.
All right, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your service, and I'm back here again. Dr. Darwin Fishman, Racial Justice Coalition of San Diego. And me and a whole lot of other community members, a lot of things that we're very concerned about, very upset about. I just want to piggyback on the earlier comments, and I want to start by saying specifically one of the tragedies that we had in custody with Frankie Greer and him being put in a bed and falling out of it, even knowing that his medical condition had been injured by the nurse. And I'm hoping that Club takes these, this is very similar trend that you've seen many times in terms of proper care for people when they are in custody, especially in terms of the racial implications and where people are placed and the treatment they receive. Him falling out of the upper-level bed was completely unnecessary and certainly could have been prevented if policies were followed. And on a basic level, if the Sheriff's Department had a relatively different culture in terms of how they treat people that are in custody. The other thing I just want to also highlight that community members are very concerned about, watching very closely, is the issue with drugs being brought into the jails. And again, we appreciate your effort, your recommendations for that, and we are hoping that you will even do more and work with the supervisors on making sure that all Sheriff's Department, all employees are properly screened when they enter the facilities. And we know now that there's been a recent arrest for a Sheriff's Department deputy for drug possession, and that should hopefully end any discussion about the Sheriff's Department deputies being perfect and not needing to be screened when they come into the facilities. With this deputy being arrested, hopefully it should send off alarm bells, and hopefully Club can help lead the charge on this. This should be the wake-up call. There's obviously the possibility that staff or Sheriff's deputies are bringing in drugs, and that's part of the fentanyl problem that you're having in the jails. Club and the supervisors need to provide leadership on this and not just keep watching these in-custody deaths pile up month after month. And again, you can do things like call for a press conference. You can do things like joint actions with the supervisors to highlight this and to put pressure on the Sheriff's Department. It's not simply a thing that the Sheriff's Department just rejects all of your recommendations and you move on. There's more that you can do. You can certainly strategize. There's town hall meetings. There's many of us in the community that will work with you on these issues. You have partners on this. Thank you again for your work on this and looking forward in the new year to working with you even more.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Youssef Miller. Mr. Miller?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Youssef Miller, I'm with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition, the Saving Lives in Custody Campaign. And I'm here today speaking in this portion in support of my veteran brother, Mr. Frankie Greer, who was in two thousand eighteen placed on the upper bunk despite his seizure disorders. And it was said that he was even offered a spot on the floor instead of getting on top bunk. This neglect rampant throughout the case, as far as we see, from the people who have complained to us. We say that there's nothing, we hear that there's nothing to see here. We hear that everything is going by the book, but we have these people who have survived tragedies coming out on the other end to tell us the opposite story. So, we need you to look into this. We need you to investigate, reopen the case, and making sure that we look into what happened to our veteran brother, our human brother that was incarcerated here in San Diego County. He has not received any justice as to this point. This deferment is denial, and we will not stand by. We will stand with Mr. Greer and his family as they seek justice for this neglect. This neglect could have cost him his life. It cost him weeks in a coma. It's not simply that he seized off the top bunk. We've been talking about this all last year before brought to a head to come to this year kicking off the first meeting with it, but all last year, we have alluded to Mr. Greer seizing off the top bunk, going into a coma. This year is a specific target to make sure that we get this justice to his family. He was in a coma for several weeks, and when he came out of the coma, he's still not fully functional as he was back in two thousand eighteen. We need to get a handle on this. Our veterans are ready to stand up and stand for Mr. Greer. I've been talking with my veteran colleagues, my activist colleagues, and we're going to start a campaign with the supervisors that we get something going with this whole in-custody death issue. We do not want a repeat of two thousand twenty. We want to start off two thousand twenty-three in a strong momentum with a lot of steam. But if that can't happen, you will of course have no shame to go out into the community and ask for new members to staff these positions. Please work with us. We're trying to get the right thing done, the right reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we will go to Lori Saldana. Amy, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time starts now.
Thank you. And I concur with the comments from the previous speakers. It's unfortunate you have to deal with the aftermath of tragedy, and I wanted to encourage you to consider some of the things that can be done to prevent some of these deaths and injuries that have happened. And I was in court recently doing support for unsheltered people who were being cited for infractions. And under current city policing, a person may receive a simple citation for what they call encroachment, but if they get enough of those, they could be arrested and detained and wind up in jail. And these people are already very weak. They are often traumatized from experiencing violence on the street. And I bring it to your attention because I'd like you to do a survey and determine how many people, or you may already know, who are detainees have previously been unsheltered, and what were the circumstances that got them into jail. And I bring this forward because the case that was brought to court, they're not eligible for a public defender when they get a ticket, which means pro bono attorneys are the only chance they have to defend their rights. And in the case that I was there for, it had gone a year from the citation until it went to court, and it was dismissed outright because the police officer simply did not ask for identification. And yet, if that person had received his multiple citations, despite the fact of not being identified properly, he could have ended up in jail and be one of the people we're discussing tonight who are injured and even killed. And so, I really encourage you to do a survey. How many people are in jail for these citations for encroachment that don't belong there, but they lack legal representation? And how many of them are disproportionately people of color, which is another big problem. Twenty percent of our unsheltered San Diegans are are black residents versus five percent of the population. So, this is a civil rights and a civil justice and a criminal justice problem, and I encourage you to consider how to save lives in custody by keeping people out of custody who don't belong there in the first place when the police fail to even identify someone before they issue a citation for something like encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Jennifer Martinez. Jennifer Martinez, are you there?
Are you able to see me?
Well, we can hear you, so your time starts now.
I just want to, I want to take the time to thank you guys for sitting here and hearing me out. I do apologize for the noise in the background. It has been a very difficult experience for me to begin to even explain what life has been like for me for the last two years. A lot of what you touched on of inequality and race, I can begin to describe to you how that's been for me. I'm first generation Hispanic. My family came here from Mexico so that I would strive for the opportunities that this country has offered, and I've taken every opportunity. I was the first in my family to graduate college, and I've been very happy with what I've done for myself. And it's been very unfortunate what has transpired in the last couple of years. I met I met a certain individual who I felt was also disadvantaged like I was, and being that knowledge is not as accessible to most, it is very hard to gain knowledge. It's not as free as we like to think, and I've basically come to you today to be heard because I feel outnumbered. I feel very, I feel threatened, scared for my future at this point in time. At this point, the police, the San Diego Police Department, I had aspired at one point to be a police officer. I had applied to be a San Diego police officer, and I did the written test and did not pursue it further. Unfortunately, our relationship has changed the last couple of years. It's become very toxic and abusive to where I feel like I no longer can call them for help. I've been intimidated. I've been mocked. My character has been destroyed. Unfortunately, there's been many situations where they've come to my home. I guess I can't, to begin, I just can't even begin to describe to you what I can say for you to understand what I've been going through, but I just today, I guess I can just start with today. My fiance has been gone for four days from my home. I don't know where he has been. I've been worried for him, and I can't even call the police because when I tried to file a missing persons report, they are well aware of where I live, and they purposely went to the wrong apartment unit, knowing if they just typed up my name, that they would know upstairs. And they purposely left without inquiring.
Unfortunately, Ms. Martinez, your time has run out. My best to you. Good luck. Next, we will go to, I noticed that Tasha Williamson initially had her hand up. Ms. Williamson, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and re-raise your hand because I don't see it up. Otherwise, we'll go to Jesse Common Greer. Jesse Greer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and your time starts now.
Hi, as you know, my name is Jesse Common Greer. My father was Frankie Greer. He's a U.S. veteran. He was a brilliant individual, able to create beautiful works of art, create beautiful amazing works of music. And he was very ingenuative. Part of the reason I became a mechanical engineer and drove me to get my engineering degree. In two thousand eighteen, he had a altercation and called nine-one-one to get help, but instead, he ended up arrested. My dad had a previous history of epilepsy, and the jail medical staff noted that he had, you know, a medical disorder. However, they denied him his medication, and to prove even more, they kind of disregarded his condition. They placed him on a top-tier bunk, which is a violation of their policies. Epileptics are required to have a lower bunk because if they have a seizure in fall, they, you know, won't have massive injuries and potential death. But unfortunately, my dad did have a seizure, fell about six to seven feet, cracked his skull on the concrete, causing him to fall into a coma for several weeks. And he had to undergo multiple procedures just to stay alive. When he woke up, he didn't know who he was. He didn't know who, where he came from, how he got there. And all he could say was the two people he could remember is his mother and me, you know. I remember getting the call. I was just getting a, doing a project at school. My uncle called me saying that my dad just woke up from a coma, and I was just completely shocked. Anyway, but due to my dad's injury, he's like no longer able to do what he once was able to do. It's no luck. He has constant short-term memory loss and gets very easily confused, has trouble doing simple tasks, has trouble communicating. And this injury has severely affected his life. He can't go back to who he once was. And over time, I've learned that the housing superintendent admitted that they didn't give my dad a bottom bunk because of his race, because he is a black man, because he's African-American. And they wanted, they said that they had to protect him from interracial mingling. It's not the exact term they use, but they didn't want to place him into a bunk that had an open lower bunk because it had two white inmates in there. So, as a result, they placed him to a different cell where he ultimately had a life-changing injury, and he was, and he's no longer able to.
Unfortunately, your time for this meeting has run out. However, I would like to provide a quick update for stuff that folks may not know about Mr. Greer in response to the public comments thus far. And again, I'm very sorry for the circumstances that your father experienced, but I'd like to just real quickly say that what folks are talking about was investigated by Club in two thousand and eighteen. And at the end of that investigation, we wrote a letter to the department verbalizing some concerns that we had with medical care or the actions of medical personnel. I would encourage anyone who's interested in what Club's findings were and the Sheriff's Department's responses to those. That is on our website, and the document, the letter back from the department about our concerns is going to be under the November two thousand eighteen meeting, and it should be something titled along the lines of eighteen dash zero-two-eight Policy Recommendation Response. I hope that provides some clarification, at least what Club's role was in this and what the Sheriff's Department's response to Club at the time was. Next, we'll go to Tasha Williamson. Ms. Williamson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't know if I can give the gentleman before me my time. Do you guys do that where you see time?
I don't believe that we do. I would defer to counsel, though.
We don't have that in our roles, no.
Ms. Williamson, there's the answer, unfortunately, but thank you for your efforts to do so.
Okay. Time and time again, we come before Club, the board. We ask for a number of things to change, and over and over, we hear overwhelmingly stories like Frankie Greer. And, you know, it takes me back to Earl McNeil when we protested over a hundred and eighty days at National City, shutting them down completely because we wanted change. Even this board had different board members, but this Club board had to change their findings and also put in letters verbalizing concerns. What my concern is, is that we keep coming back here. We keep changing the names of the people being harmed, but it is the same thing over and over and over again. Negligence by San Diego Sheriff's Department, harm by San Diego Sheriff's Department, people who are getting six-figure salaries and then making an additional six figures in overtime. People who are adults, who should be professional, who know the job to do because they get the training to know the job that they're supposed to do and who refuse to do it. And at some point, we are going to need more than a letter. We are going to need more than a sustained finding. We are going to need people who are negligent that harm people to be charged, to be fired. That is the next letter that you need to send to the Sheriff's Department, asking them to hold accountable the people that are doing these egregious harms and get rid of them. Open up slots because we do not need people who can't come and attend to someone when other inmates are screaming for help. Because somebody is black, they can either go, and disabled and a veteran, they can either go on the top bunk, or they can go on the floor and lay on the floor next to the toilets. I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. Racism is at the head of all of this. And until you are willing to stand up for the injustices of people like Frankie Greer and put everything on the line, you're going to keep getting Earl McNeils and Frankie Greers and so many others. And I'm tired of having people who know that this racism is a systemic problem. And we need you to stand up stronger and harder than you ever have before.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. To Ms. Williamson's point, in reference to, and I know about a letter, she mentioned about letters, but if anyone wants to know what this board did in reference to the Earl McNeil, the unfortunate Earl McNeil situation, that will be on our website. And under the November two thousand nineteen board meeting, the Policy Recommendation Response, where we made four recommendations, the department did not implement two and implemented two more. And in reference to the public comment about asking for folks to be terminated or whatnot, I can sort of dive into that when we discuss Attachment L and our rules and regulation revision special meeting that we're going to schedule. Next, we will go to Tom Packard. Mr. Packard, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Your time starts now.
My name's Tom Packard. I'm a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice North County. One of the important things I've learned in my many years of research, consulting, and teaching is that the importance of a new leader clearly articulating an organization's mission, vision, and values and continually doing things to put these into effect as part of the organization's culture. I see that the Sheriff's Department website has new references in their statement to compassion, building relationships, and being considerate and respectful in interactions. I'm not sure what Sheriff Martinez's role was in developing or reaffirming these principles, so I hope that you'll invite her to attend a Club meeting to specifically share what she's doing and what her plans are to operationalize these with staff. In recent years, there are many examples of staff not behaving in alignment with some of these, from traffic stops to telling an inmate to sleep on the floor, to the treatment of people with mental illnesses. A recent press release summarized some of her plans, but none of them addressed the problems in organizational culture that can inhibit effective implementation of plans. Please ask her specifically what she plans in terms of culture change and ask for staff reports at each of your meetings regarding specific progress that's being made. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Packard, or Dr. Packard. Next, we will go to Robin Sales. Ms. Sales, are you there?
Hi, yes, I am here. Thank you. Good evening, Club. I come before you to encourage you to seek support from the Board of Supervisors in regard to the powerlessness of this board. Mr. Parker, the investigators, and the Club work hard to make sure that justice is being served, especially in the last year, and I appreciate that you have left the old Club behind. As many of my colleagues have mentioned, the Sheriff's Department is responding more quickly to your recommendations, but also almost never concur and have a multitude of reasons that they will not, for the reasons they will not make changes. I'm hoping that Sheriff Martinez begins her tenure by making the changes she seems intent on making while nevertheless rendering the Club powerless. Thank you, Mr. Greer, for your comments. There is no point in my adding anything. It's a travesty of the highest order that a human being was denied a basic right per the San Diego Sheriff's Department policy, but continue to use their unbridled power to obscure the truth and continue to blame the victim. Club members, it is time to take these issues and concerns to the Board of Supervisors and ask the public to support your request for more staff, more money, and to expand your oversight capabilities to have the ability to force change. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go now to Lynn Owens. Ms. Owens, are you there?
Okay, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can.
My, my name is Lynn Owens. I live in zip code nine-two-one-three-one. It's heartbreaking to hear this month after month, I have to say. Last week, KPBS Television aired an interesting interview with the new Sheriff, Kelly Martinez. Sheriff, it sounded great, you know? Sheriff Martinez stated that among her high priorities were addressing jail deaths, studying best practices, and enhancing mental health and medical health care for people in jails. She said she wants STSD to be, quote, "open, transparent, and accountable," end quote. Sounds great, doesn't it? Asked about the statistics that blacks are twice as likely as whites to be stopped by STSD officers, she said that it's up to the public to report issues so the department can examine them. This is just one part of all this that I find very disingenuous for three reasons. First of all, as we know, and everybody has pointed out, the department continues to have First of all, as we know, and everybody has pointed out, the department continues to have a very poor track record. Of responding to reported issues, including the eight straight negative S G S D responses. To Clurb recommendations included on tonight's agenda. If even Clurb recommendations are routinely dismissed. How is a citizen complaint going to carry sufficient weight to make a change? Furthermore, at what cost does the citizen step forward to complain? We know that among many. Communities, low income and minority especially distrust of the Sheriff's Department runs very deep and for good reasons. People, many people fear stepping into the spotlight because of potential negative effects. And more power to all of you who are speaking up, you know, God bless you. Finally, even without additional citizen complaints. The Sheriff's Department has plenty of information available from all of the reviews, analyses and studies. Completed in the at the last year and previously, along with a pervasive string of large payout lawsuits. Clerk. I urge you to hold Sheriff Martinez accountable for implementing what she says she wants. Safer jails with better medical care, mental health care and fewer deaths. Well, we certainly all want this. Please invite her to attend your meetings to hear in person what your citizens are saying. Of course, more humane treatment would be welcome as well. Thank you for all you do and let's. Do what we can to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Um, I see that Mary Best is in the audience. I also have a request to read something in the record from her. Ms. Best, if you want to speak instead, go ahead and raise your hand and I'll wait for that. In the meantime. In reference to the public comments and reference to racial disparities, I want to remind the folks at the meeting that clerk tackled that subject or. Uh initially tackled that subject uh early last year, made seven recommendations to reduce racially disparate. Uh practices and uh all but one of the recommendations at that for those for that topic were not implemented. Uh, so I see here that uh I will just read into the record, uh Mary Best's comment. Regarding the Sheriff's Department rejecting recommendations to require screening of all staff for contraband. Asserting there is no evident need for this level of department oversight and monitoring of staff. This is clearly not the case when recently a deputy on the force for over fifteen years. Is arrested for three counts of drug possession among other criminal charges. Dismissing concerns by clerk and the public regarding drugs entering the jails as a flagrant flagrant disregard for the safety and integrity of both department staff and inmates. I would request a clerk pushback and strongly advocate for a system-wide screening of all sheriff department staff. And hold the department accountable accountable to their own stated high standards of excellence, accountability and transparency. Thank you all for your public service, Mary Best therapist and San Diego resident. And with that, Chair Delaney, there is no further request. There are no further requests.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Yeah, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. Are there any revisions or changes that need to be made? And if not, do I have a motion to approve? Uh, Mr. Wilson, motion?
Show move.
Is there a second? Do you have a second?
Okay, I can second or uh I can make the motion either. Uh, I'm good.
Mr. Wilson Wilson made the motion. Dr. Brown, you want to do a second?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? No, Robert, Pastor Spriggs, would you take role?
Okay, Eileen Delaney?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pintar?
Yes.
Excuse me, Pastor Robert Spriggs. Junior, yes, Andrew Hayes?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Arlie Brown?
Yes.
Nadia Keen, are you?
Epstein.
Okay, Bonnie King?
Yes.
Ariana Frederico Mondragon? Tim Ware?
Yes.
And G I Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, we do not have any presentations or training this evening. So we'll go to number five, which is our executive officer's report. Mr. Parker?
There, Delaney. Over the last month, staff have indulgently working to ensure that the virtual capacity is flawless when we go back to. In-person meetings uh no later than March. Uh, for December of twenty twenty-two, there were fifteen new cases. That's resulted in uh the yearly total of one sixty-five, which is the highest total we've had in several years. Um, we're going to break that down in in our annual report, uh you know, where those uh complaints had come from and what the numbers. May or may not mean. So at the end of the year, there were ninety-seven open cases, thirty-one of those were death cases. One is on tonight's agenda. There were eleven, there are eleven open uses of force resulting in great bodily injury. Four of those are on tonight's agenda. We have the materials for all of them. There are five open discharge of firearm cases and we have the materials for two of those. Uh, you'll see that attachment C talks about the clerk reports uh by case number and you can see again, I say it every month, uh thanks to the good work of the staff. We are knocking the numbers down, even though. It looks like we have the same number of open cases every month. If you look at the type of cases and the number of cases that were closing. I will prioritize in the cases appropriately and they are be investigated thoroughly and they're being uh closed accordingly. So I'm I'm very happy with where we're at right now. As we move forward and and uh really assess if we have the appropriate staffing. As far as my correspondence to the full clerk that I've released to the public, there were two, two emails that I sent. One was a. Media article compilation that had two clerk-related interviews in them. And the other contained five articles, two of them were clerk-specific and three were oversight related. Now, as far as the policy recommendations pending responses. As of right now, and we'll talk about the ones we received as of right now, the Sheriff's Department has thirteen outstanding. However, just prior to the meeting. We received uh one, which will be on next month's agenda, so that'll that knocks it down to twelve. The probation department has five uh currently outstanding, but just prior to tonight's meeting, we received one, which will be on next month's agenda, which so therefore they have. Four. Just prior to the meeting and sent to all clerk members, but then obviously sent to the public distribution list and posted on our website is a. Draft of our internal clerk uh policy recommendation process just. At the request of a clerk member, um this Federico Mondragon, but also so the public knows, everybody knows what we do, how we come up with these policy recommendations. And what our internal processes are. I'm not going to discuss it in depth here. That's a draft that's simply put out for you folks to contemplate. We'll put it on next uh next meeting agenda. Further, you know, for a more thorough uh presentation on that. In reference to the. Responses that we've received, I'd like to go through each one. And so for attachment E, attachment E is for case number twenty-one zero zero four. This was. Unfortunately, someone died in this situation and and we at the time could not determine. Who answered the arresting officer questions on the receiving screening questionnaire during the booking process? The Sheriff's Department responded. Um, the response is is a little confusing, but upon clarification, they have. There will not be those questions any longer. There will not be arresting officer questions any longer. A registered nurse, as they say in the letter, a registered nurse will be responsible for asking those questions. The medical services division manual is being updated and reviewed. And then once approved, it'll clearly identify who's responsible for answering or whatever information will be in the record. So. Those questions will no longer be there. So technically, I don't know if you want to say it's implemented or not, the questions aren't going to be there, but there's a revision to their manual. Uh, that, you know, that you won't need those questions. So that's attachment E. Miss, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Pintar.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Paul. I I'm. I saw the the response. It says a registered nurse is responsible for asking medical questions before booking. But our request was to identify the arresting officer questions. What I think I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong. Is that they're just going to eliminate arresting officer questions? Is that the case? Because. From my recollection of the case, the arresting officer asked a series of questions. The uh medical staff ask a series of questions. Am I not recalling it correctly?
You're recalling it correctly or you're interpreting correctly that they're going to eliminate. That's what I was told, eliminate that section. Uh, so that all the information now will be attributed to medical personnel. Um, and maybe that's something that either the Sheriff's Department can chime in on now or wait till a board member. Uh inquiry to to clarify if I'm misstating something, which I don't think I am.
I don't understand why only the medical staff would be asking the intake questions because these are questions that are asked upon intake. No.
Is there anyone from the Sheriff's Department that's willing to apply?
Sergeant Tinkley, would you like to respond to that? Thank you. Might be muted.
I don't think he's responded yet. Oh, he has, sorry. We can't hear you.
Sergeant Tinkley, we can't hear you. We did hear you in sound check though prior, so.
Still can't hear you, sir.
While he's working on his sound, I would just like to state that it's troubling to me that. We have no jurisdiction over the medical staff yet. Now they're saying. That medical staff will be responsible for all of this intake. That's the response to our quest, to our request. So I'd like to know if I'm just misinterpreting Sergeant Tinkley.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, you can hear me. Okay, perfect. All right, so the the question was, I'm sorry, because I was trying to get this fixed. Can you ask a question one more time? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. So our request was that uh the Sheriff's Department identify. Who fills out the arresting uh officer questions. There is a questions that the arresting officer asks. When a person is being detained. There is a subsequent, if I'm recalling this case correctly, there isn't. This was the Arroyo case, I believe. There's a substance series of questions that is asked by the medical personnel. And we were asking for simply that the arresting officer, whoever fills out the arresting officer questions. identifies themselves. So we know who received that information because there was conflicting information was my recollection. The response that the Sheriff's Department has provided is that all of the questions will now be asked by the medical personnel. I don't understand why the medical personnel is asking all of the intake questions now.
The questions are, the questions are asked by the registered nurse with the new updated policy. With the uh confirmation of the arresting officer and or transporting officer. Uh, who's bringing in the incarcerated person. So it'll be answered or asked by the registered nurse and answered by the incarcerated person. With the confirmation of the responding or arresting officer and or transporting officer. So they're not going away. It's just the officer is not asking the questions. They're being a- asked by. The registered nurse with the confirmation by the officer and or arresting. Um, deputy or officer. If that makes sense.
Even if they're not medical related.
Uh, the whole point of the questions for getting booked in is to make sure they're clear to be booked in that it's. If they were involved in an accident or something to that, you know, something that would keep them from actually being booked in and they need to go to the hospital. That's why we ask those questions to make sure that we can actually take them into our custody when they're going through the booking process.
But since we don't have jurisdiction over medical staff currently, that completely eliminates our ability to. Evaluate whether the intake was processed properly is my concern.
Well, I do believe you'll still have access to the documentation. I I don't know what that process is going to be. You know, at this point until you have jurisdiction over medical, but those questions are still being answered in order for us to be able to safely. Assess and take in incarcerated persons from all over the county.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, uh, can you explain the confirmation process? In other words, if the medical personnel asked the question, you said that there's a confirmation process with the. Officer, the warrant officer, um, will that be documented? And if the nurse notices some medical issue that the corrections or the detention people should be aware of. Um, how will that be transmitted and how will we know that, say, an inmate is subject to epileptic seizures, has a history of it? How do we know that that's going to be relayed uh to the to the detention uh personnel? Again, what's that confirmation process and will that confirmation process document that the officer was standing there? Conf- confirming what the medical personnel were asking?
Sir, the uh the confirmation is going to be. The deputy and or officer who makes the arrest, uh the questions that are asked by the registered nurse. Will be asked to the incarcerated person. If the incarcerated person isn't willing to provide their medical history and or issues that they have. There's nothing that that officer and or deputy are are going to be able to do at the time. That'll be something that's all documented through the the nursing process and the intake process. Now, if there's something obvious, like say, you know, they got into a car accident and or. There's something that the nurse doesn't feel comfortable with, then. There is a process that's called the rejection process, which is where then. The officer or deputy will take the incarcerated person to the hospital to be evaluated by a doctor. Then once they're taken to the hospital to be evaluated, they get a a clearance to be able to come back and be booked into process. And and that's the uh basically that process for that portion.
Uh, is is that all in writing? Is that procedure documented?
Is it documented? Yes, because we bring back the discharge paperwork from the hospital. So and we provide that to the medical staff. So yes, it is documented.
And we we know uh who the officer was that was there during the confirmation process?
Well, every officer that uh brings somebody into custody, not only is it recorded on our uh. Recording devices, but also they write their name on our booking slips. So there's a spot for the arresting officer on our booking uh slips as well as transporting officer.
All right.
And or deputy.
And 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 they'll be be recording the questions that the medical personnel ask?
I did not say they're recording the medical question. Sir, I said it's recorded that as them coming into intake. So. If we needed to identify an officer as they come into our Sallyport, we'll probably be able to do that.
Okay.
Sergeant Tinkley, I have a question as well. What prompted uh the change in policy?
Well, we have a whole new, we have a whole new medical procedure that's being implemented into our facility. So uh making sure that we can give better care to incarcerated persons, make sure that we can provide the necessary medical uh. You know, care that we need to provide. So we're revamping it through NAV Care. So when we. We're utilizing NAV Care comes new policy, new procedures and new implementation, a new implementing new policies and procedures. What it comes with the process.
Um, I know right now we do not have purview on medical, but it would it be. Could you, could you send us over the the new policy, the new procedures? We could uh be aware.
You know, if you don't have uh jurisdiction over uh medical, I would have to definitely uh request that to be sent over and see if that's something.
Yeah, I I it's not.
Definitely check into it for you, for sure.
If I may, uh, if I may quickly quickly add to that part of the conversation. Clerk has jurisdiction to review any and all policies and procedures at the, from the Sheriff's Department to include Medical Service Division, even if we don't have the jurisdiction over the staff. We have the ability to review uh every and any policy in place at the department. So we should be able to get that.
Thank you. I think it would, it would help us, you know, just understand a little bit more.
Yeah, I'll get with Paul and um I'll get with Paul and we'll uh we'll square everything away for you.
Great, appreciate that. Thank you, Sergeant.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Paul, uh, Mr. Parker, you're back on.
Okay, um, next we'll go to policy recommendation under attach uh response under attachment F, which is. Clerk case number twenty-one zero six zero. This was a situation in where we believed uh that it was concerning. That someone was interviewed in the detention's facility in view of other incarcerated persons, therefore. Uh, placing himself, uh, you know, being placed in a position where he felt unsafe. So we recommended to the department that they create a policy mandating uh. Them to conduct all DI uh detention investigation unit interviews in a private area out of view from other inmates. They actually did implement this. When feasible, they did implement in their detention's investigations unit operation training manual, the following. When conducting in-person interviews, DIU detectives will implement the following measures. And they bolded this, whenever possible, interviews with incarcerated persons at detention facilities will be conducted in an area out of view of other incarcerated persons. So that is again, when possible, that's a new addition to the policy and procedure, or I'm sorry, to their training manual. Uh, it's not feasible all the time according to the department, but when possible. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair Delaney.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Wilson, it looks like Mr. Wilson has a question.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, can you give me some examples when it wouldn't be possible? I mean, they, do they have interview rooms? Do they?
Are you, are you asking Sergeant Tinkley or Mr. Parker?
I I whoever has an example when it would not be possible. I mean, I I find that kind of interesting. Well, I mean, do do they not have interview rooms? Do they not have facilities for conducting in-house investigations?
Is part of the response, the department indicates, and then I'll turn it over to Sergeant Tinkley if he has more to add. The department indicates in the response, we must also allow investigators discretion regarding where to hold interviews, given the myriad of events, varying locations, and the size and scope of investigations. As far as your questions about what rooms or whatnot, I'll have to defer to the sergeant.
Yeah, and and example, because that that those words didn't didn't describe a a situation where it wouldn't be possible.
Well, I mean, I can't speak for every situation, you know, but there may be, there may, there may be.
Can you speak to one situation, please?
There, there may be times where staffing levels are extremely low and or, you know, the situation uh doesn't allow for there to be enough staffing to be able to secure the situation and and make it safe. And for that one person leaving the whole area to go to an interview room may not be feasible. Um, it may not be, it may be around the corner that's feasible, maybe not an interview room where they're out of sight and and unable to uh you know, be seen by other incarcerated persons. But also, we have to keep in mind that when we remove an incarcerated person completely from a room, um, other incarcerated persons already know that they're being interviewed also, and that could also have an impact uh when they return. So there's a lot of variables in in the process and the policy is just stating that, hey, with the deputy or the investigator uh feels that it's appropriate to do so, then then we will do so.
Right. And also, if they interview the inmate in front of other inmates, they know that the investigators are talking to them by the same token.
Uh, yes, sir, they do. So I mean, it's.
But but that, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see the perspective you're coming from. If you're short staff, uh, that makes a lot of sense because I know you're really short staff.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm gonna have, Paul, did you want to do anything from the sustained findings before we go to public?
Uh, well, we have, we have many more recommendations to review. However, we do have
Okay.
Like you said, and so I think um if it's okay, uh, since it's all part of five. You know what? Let's let's go to public comment. I think that would be reasonable so that each one of these recommendations, uh, the public should have an opportunity to apply.
Okay.
So with that being said, Ms. Martinez, Jennifer Martinez. Ms. Martinez, are you there? Ms. Martinez?
Okay, here we go. Hi, sorry about that.
There you are.
Um, I just wanted to weigh in on the prisoners and the medical system. My fiance has been a prisoner at Donovan State Prison for twelve years. He has been recently released and only been out of in society for three years. And it's been very unfortunate how he has been taking advantage of, because he's unaware of rights that he never thought he had. Um, the medical staff has built a relationship with Donovan State Prison Alvarado Medical Hospital specifically. They cater to Donovan and they have an extensive relationship with Damian Maple, my fiance, who has continuously been under diagnosed, mistreated. They diagnosed him with diabetes, but never told him he had diabetes. They never gave him a diabetic machine, no blood test trips. And now he, uh, a man who used to run five miles a day, it has severe pain in his leg. And um, he's been suffering for two years, been with no, no proper tools or medication and continue to be treated as a prisoner that he was in those twelve years. And I just wanted to weigh in. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Uh, Chair Delaney, I see no other requests.
All right. If you'd like to go ahead and go through the policy recommendation responses and the sustained findings as well. And then after that, we will go to any more public comments that we might have.
Well, I do have one public comment that will come up on one of the attachments.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Why I'm thinking that perhaps if, and and you're the chairman, but maybe each one will just give me the opportunity.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go to attachment G. And that attachment G is in reference to our case number twenty one zero eight three. This was a, this was a situation in in where we made recommendations about the documentation or lack thereof. Uh, we we wanted deputies to be required to note in the jail information management system, each meal distribution. And that if an incarcerated person missed a regularly scheduled meal and is provided with a substitute meal and beverage, uh, that it should be noted in that gym's system. The second one was, it is recommended that the completion or incompletion and reason for incompletion of all Title fifteen minimum standards shall be noted in in gyms. So for the first one about the documentation, and again, I my understanding is that that recommendation was not going to be implemented. There that that's what my interpretation of this response is. In reference to the one about the completion or incompletion of all California Title fifteen standards, shall be noted in gyms, that is a practice that the department says is already in practice. So that that's my brief overview of the responses to those two responses uh to those two recommendations.
Any public comments?
I see none.
Okay. Do you like to continue?
Attachment H is for clerk case number twenty two dash zero one one. This was a situation in which clerk recommended that all high-level incarcerated persons be housed in cells that have food flaps or cuffing ports. But food flaps is what we termed it to be, the proper term is cuffing ports. And then we also requested that they mandate that only one cell door is open at a time while deputies daily facility operations, this meal, medication distribution, cell searches in the modules. The reason for the recommendation was a case that we believe that the deputies were at risk. That's the only reason we made the recommendation. Uh, we believe that by having the two doors open and then an altercation had occurred, uh occurred. It was very simple for maybe one incarcerated person who happened to be there who did not participate, could have easily participated uh and ganged up on the deputy at the time. And we felt that was a safety issue. The response from the department on both is no. With the caveat that the Vista Detention Facility has been working on adding these cuffing ports to the remaining doors. Uh, there have been some supply chain issues that have obviously plagued the the whole nation. Uh, once they've been received, uh they will be retrofitted. So Vista Detention will be retrofitted. Every cell will have these cuffing ports. And then the the uh recommendation to mandate only one cell door open at a time would, it was an operational issue that they they have to have two, there there are times when they have to have two doors open at a at a time. Uh, so that is the response from the department to our recommendations.
Any public comments that you can see on that?
Don't see any, no.
Okay.
And if, and it looks as if uh these re- retrofit should be by spring of this year, so in the next couple of months, which is good news.
That's great. Uh, Sergeant Tinkley, did you have a, your hand is up?
I did. I just wanted to let you know just a little further on that. Uh, what Paul was saying is that uh we are currently uh retrofitting those and they're going in as we speak, so.
That's terrific.
Just, just something to add to that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Sergeant Tinkley. Next, we'll go to the standalone recommendation, non-case specific uh recommendation to document the searches of transportation vehicles. This was, uh, the, there were two recommendations. One was to mandate the documentation of transportation vehicle search before and after every transport. The policy, the sheriff's department policy at the time said that that's what they, that, not that they document, but that they search before and after every transport. All I was asking for was just document, document the search. And then two, to revise a green sheet, the internal process, you know, specific to the transportation folks to mandate that the driver open and clear each compartment uh before and not just after each transportation uh and or movement. That was simply to just, to just make both um the same, you know, just the consistency, right? So the first one, the department is not, uh, the department says it's a current practice right now, if I understood correctly, it's a current undocumented practice to document. And that the second one, yes, they made a minor change to the green sheet to make it consistent. So no to the first one. Yes, to the second.
Any comments on that?
Looks like Vice Chair Pintar. I don't see public comment, Chair Delaney. It looks like Vice Chair.
Ms. Pintar?
If I understood that correctly, Paul, so what they're saying is that they already do these searches and they already document them. Is that correct? Or were we asking for additional documentation that the searches had been completed at every step of the process? And just for the public, be in case they weren't aware, this was just as in uh one of the recommendations that was made in order to try and keep any drugs out of the jails that might be being passed while people are moving from um court proceedings and back to the into the detention facilities. Correct, correct?
That's exactly what this recommendation was to do, just simply to ensure that these searches are being documented. I mean, look. Everybody knows if it's not documented, it didn't occur, right? I mean, we hear that all the time. So we were just simply asking for the documentation. The response says revising this section to mandate documentation of searches is not necessary. That is as it is already a training standard, past practice, and staff are held accountable if they fail to complete this action.
Uh, that's where I'm, that's where I'm, that's my question. And maybe Sergeant Tinkley can answer this. My question is, if it says and staff are held held accountable if they fail to complete this action. Well, if, how are they held accountable if it's not documented?
Sergeant Tinkley? Yeah, I have that question.
The responses, the responses is we don't need to document it. It's already a standard practice, so we hold staff account, staff accountable. If they don't complete the action, well, how do you know if they've completed the action if it's not documented? It must be documented somewhere. Or you wouldn't have any way to keep um to hold them accountable. Right?
So at the beginning of transportation, when transportation does a bus run, it is documented. It's searched. It's checked. And then they lower low, uh, they bring on the incarcerated persons when they pick them up. Then when the incarcerated person's exit, they search the bus again. And they lock it. If there's nothing found, there's no documentation that needs to be done because nothing is found. It's a, a clean, clear uh bus that that has nothing on it. And then when they go to court, they bring them back, that that bus is secured. So there would be no way for anything to get into the you know, areas of the bus that are of concern. And then we bring them back down and and we transport them to their facility. So I think that uh this policy was written to say, or policy recommendation, well, the response was saying, hey, we we do uh document this already. We do complete these searches already, and there's no need to document it every single time when there's nobody, you know, nobody around because it's it's locked and secure.
So Sergeant Tinkley, I I have a question then. So if someone forgets, first of all, you you think about if they didn't find anything, there's no reason. But if they didn't search it, they wouldn't find anything. So let's say that they make an error as as we humans do. And they don't search it, and there is something there, but there's no documentation to say that they actually did this search. Does that make sense to you? We're just saying. Maybe, maybe it would be better to just kinda, you know, document that you did it. Just kind of a refresh, you know, pilots have a checklist of things and even though they do it over and over and over, they still have that checklist that they have to kinda check off. Um, just for the safety of everyone.
I think that uh that this was uh reviewed, you know, by staff and we we believe that our response is adequate. So I know that uh you, you know, it it might be something that you don't agree with, but that that's the response that we provided and uh we believe that's sufficient.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Parker?
You have two. You have Mr. Ware and you also have a member of the public, Paloma.
I don't see Mr. Ware. Oh, there you are. Sorry, Tim.
No worries, no worries. I, you know, I also, um, like the rest of us, we want to make sure I'm sure Sergeant Tinkley feels the same, that uh their, your deputies are above reproach, reproach. When you take this layer out from a searching standpoint, what you're saying is, we have already said that it's not the inmates or anybody else responsible for drugs. Though then then we have to turn towards, is it the deputies? That's why you want to put another layer in this. So we can say, look, and we can catch these things. Because when you take this layer out to me, and I just want to make sure, maybe I'm missing it, it turns to, okay, well, if you guys documented it and you didn't find any drugs on the inmate and drugs are still getting in, then we have no choice but to to turn and look at the deputies for bringing drugs in. And I don't want to do that. That's just, that's just us rolling, rolling around in this little head up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ware.
Chair Delaney, you have, um, unless Sergeant Tinkley has something to say to that, you have a public comment.
Let's go to public comment and then if Mr. Sergeant Tinkley has anything to say, um, you can do it afterwards. Is that okay?
Here, we have, we have two requir- actually three requests to speak on this item. First, we will go to Paloma Serna.
Hello? Hi. Hello. Hi, my name is Paloma Serna. My daughter is Elisa Serna. She died in November eleventh, two thousand and nineteen at the Los Kalinas Jail. I'm with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition Saving Lives in Custody Camp Campaign. And just to stay on the topic of documentation, you know, it makes no sense how things are not being documented. My daughter was in car- incarcerated for five days. Her whole file was um undocumented. And um, everything was actually fa- falsified and given to the DA. Things have to be documented, so we don't even know the truth. Like I've had mentioned before um, that that we've been told so many different stories from different investigators, detectives, even for the captain or war or uh the captain of the jail. Different stories of her death because there's nothing documented. Things have to be documented. And so there're not, no one's, there're, these deputies would never be held accountable at all. That is why it's very convenient that the nurses are doing the take, doing the the intake questions now. Doesn't surprise me at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will go to Jennifer Martinez.
Hi, um, again, I do want to weigh in on the topic of documentation. Um, being again at Alvarado Medical Hospital, um firsthand witnessing when Damian had given me pro- um, proper permissions to have access to his medical records. I was the cushion between the guard and the prisoner. And the nurse denied us that information and they literally kicked us out with no documentation, with no discharge papers. He was suffering from liver kidney failure. We went over a month without treatment. Um, currently, I got a call today saying that he was at Mercy, Scripps Mercy. I I apparently he was in there at on the seventh and they documented that he was discharged on the eighth. Um, I called today, oh, I got off work. They, they directed me to his room as if he was admitted. But there was no documentation. The health insurance, Melina, called me and said that there was no documentation that he was still a patient in their care. But the staff themselves were laughing and hung up on me today. I I fear for his life and his health and that he continues to get taken advantage of um, being that he is still a prisoner, is online and has no, no uh, he's not aware of the rights that he has and continues to be denied that the health that he needs and I I again, like I said, I I have no one to call for help and documentation is key.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other requests for public comment on that. I see no other requests for public comment on that.
Well, would you like to now go to, uh, number six then?
So this is attachment J. Oh, wait a minute, I apologize, it looks as if Gil, um. Looks like Jennifer Schmidt had a comment on the last.
Okay.
Can we? We can hear you now, yes.
Um, I'm late to this, I apologize, um, but documentation is perfect. The jail was well aware, my dad died on Valentine's Day this year or last year, almost a year. They were well aware of his dementia and he died fifteen hours after being booked into the jail. After being released twelve hours before, well aware of his condition because they let me into the jail to get him out. Because they thought he wasn't sobering up. Documentation once again, they're not following through with what they're being told. Or they just don't care and his life could have been saved. His life could have been saved and, and for what? And for what? They did, never even had a traffic ticket, never even been in trouble. They were aware when they arrested him, he had dementia. The hospital said he needed to stay there and he goes to jail and he dies and for what? For what documentation? We finally get the medical examiner report a couple of weeks ago. And it's the same thing, the second autopsy that I had done said, just watered down, unbelievably watered down. And it's just not fair to the families because if it was a deputy that was. Murdered by an inmate, it would be all over the news, the facts, everything would be out, but because it's inmates. It just doesn't seem like anybody cares. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And again, our condolences to you and also to Paloma Serna. Next, we will go to Youssef Miller. Mr. Miller.
Yes, Youssef Miller, North County Equity and Justice Coalition Saving Lives in Custody Campaign. This documentation is critical. Here we are asking for documentation and what we get is we don't need documentation. But when we try to make changes, they say we can't make changes because there's no documentation of change being needed. And then we ask for changes, again, they're saying, well, documentation doesn't support it. So this is a cycle that, that's just keeping us running around in circles. It is a no brainer, in my opinion, and we should look, break the cycle of documentation, no documentation. And get to the root of it, document so that these things can be proven that they're happening. And maybe say that it's not coming from one route or another. It's, it's important that you hear time after time, these family members who have lost loved ones. And the main thing that they have that's inconsistent is documentation. We can do better than that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we'll go to Dr. Fishman. Doc, Dr. Fishman.
Good evening, I wasn't speaking again, but okay. Hearing the comments, uh, this exchange, I just want to say, it's like there's an elephant in the room, people that want to talk about. But I did serve on the community review of police practices, uh, city of San Diego. And I was there in the quote unquote battle days where the city attorney was there. Same as city attorney that was a part of our meeting was the one that would defend the city of San Diego from lawsuits. And I think, certainly from clerk, your vantage point, you can talk openly about this. You actually, uh, your recommendation was followed and you had a policy, it's set up that did screening of sheriff's department deputies and staff. And they were caught and it was not just caught with bringing in contraband and drugs. But it was shown as directly connected to things like overdose and people dying. Then ding ding, of course, that's multimillion dollar lawsuits, even worse than what we're getting right now. Uh, city and county of San Diego for lawsuits. And I think you need to address that and be open about that. The sheriff's department's not going to take your recommendation, they're going to fight everyone in the world because they don't want that level of accountability. If you actually screen people and it shows that something like a sheriff deputy was bringing in the drugs and that was directly related to the family members you're talking to that have died. They sure don't want that level of responsibility. And I think if you know that you understand those dynamics, then it makes it much easier to proceed and take the, this in the level of severity, seriousness that it is. And also again, partner with community organizations, partner with the supervisors and come together. Don't just take it that the sheriff's department's independent and just can reject your recommendations and leave it at that. You seriously have to find other ways to strategize and push for it. That's why we're here, that's why you're hearing from the family members. It's outrageous and it's incredible that this continues to go on. If you have any doubt, just look at Google saying Doc, uh, Donovan prison and drugs. It's been done in the San Diego area, this is not a new phenomenon. Donovan had a problem with workers, staff, deputies bringing in drugs there. This is not something where San Diego is on an island and somehow superior to every other facility in the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Delaney, I do not see any other requests to speak.
Okay, do you want to continue on the physical search, scanning?
Sure, this is attachment J, this is a standalone policy recommendation to search and or scan all persons entering detention facilities to include staff or contractors or county employees. We were proactive. Um, I think that everyone knows that what we tried to do specifically over the last year was to think outside of the box and not just go with what we determined. Or, or uncovered during case investigations, but to actually think about how could we assist the department? In reducing the number of drugs getting into the facilities. It looks like Tasha Williamson has her hand up, Ms. Williamson. Let me, let me wait till after I'm finished, I apologize, I, I think that this might be about this topic. So, so either way, we'll get to you here in a minute. So thank you for your understanding. So we put forward this recommendation to, yeah, nothing should be off the table. It was our opinion, uh, that nothing should be off the table, especially when it comes to drug interdiction efforts. So we made the recommendation, it's a, it's a bold one. It's one that, uh, you know, is contentious in some ways, uh, but common sense and others. To physically search or body scan all persons entering a San Diego Sheriff's Department operated detention facility to include all employees, county employees, contractors. And those persons conducting county related business. All persons to include outside of staff, also those social professional visitors, incarcerated persons upon booking and transferring between facilities or reentering facilities after having departed it for court. Or medical treatment. We made that rec, we made that little part of the recommendation a couple of months earlier about scanning folks when they left for court and come back or medical appointments and, and come into another facility. But operational delays was cited as the reason that that's wasn't going to happen. The subsequent time, the board of supervisors has allocated some funding for the department to purchase additional body scanners. Uh, that's, so that's a little bit of the background. In the response to this recommendation, two topics were cited as why they're not going to. Implement the searching and scanning of employees as a matter of routine as we have recommended or staff members. And, and incarcerated persons back and forth through the facilities. Radiation, increased levels of radiation exposure was cited as number one. But also, number two was cited as the employees of the department. And contractors, specifically the employees are backgrounded. And to do so, to subject them to the scanning would be a breach of their trust. Uh, that was pretty much the, the response and maybe I'm paraphrasing, but I'll, I'll read it actually. This action would represent a breach of the trust we have placed in them and result in grave consequences from morale and employee retention. So the response is no, um, that is not going to be implemented. And if I've misquoted that, Sergeant Tingley can make sure I under, that I'm on point. Otherwise, we have one public comment and actually we have two, uh, Tasha Williamson and Dr. Tom Packard, may I go there first, Chair Delaney?
Absolutely.
Ms. Williamson?
Uh, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Um, thank you, I, I, I just want to say that, um, I'm disheartened to hear that they are talking about a breach in trust. Um, for their employees, um, I feel like a breach of trust is Richard Fisher, um, who assaulted over eighteen women. A breach of trust is, uh, Corey Ritchie, the recent officer, uh, who waited until after hours. And went into stations and stole, uh, narcotics. He was arrested at his San Diego jail, uh, workplace, uh, that is a breach in trust. That is a breach in public trust. A breach in trust is when it takes forty-five minutes for officers to come to the aid of someone. A breach in trust is when, uh, someone is left laying on the floor for hours and dies. A breach in trust is when they don't do their jobs and they're negligent. And all these deaths amount to the fact that San Diego County Jail has the highest in custody deaths in the state. That is a breach of trust. I don't give a damn about breaching of trust with employees when employees have allowed to be reckless, rogue and criminal. I need you to push back on this time and time again, stand up for us, that's why you are the board for us. I need you to push back. They have breached their trust over and over and over again. People have died, so remember that every time they push back on you. It's not just about who you are and your titles and your resume builders, it's about the people's lives that you stand for in those seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Dr. Tom Packard. Dr. Packard.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I hope you all are as concerned as I am about the staff response to your recommendation regarding the screening of staff. And that quote, there is no evidence or data to show department employees or contract staff are bringing in contraband to our facilities, unquote. First, what data have they gathered on this? They could only say that if they've gathered evidence by looking at it, by examining staff. In a very cursory search, I found six examples of correctional staff. Who I presume had past background investigations, bringing in contraband. In San Mateo County, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, Brooklyn, Jackson County, Kansas. Monmouth and Duchess Counties in New Jersey. And by the way, the SDSD deputy recently arrested for drug possession and burglary presumably passed the quote. Comprehensive background investigation, unquote. Please ask staff to provide for every example they have contraband being in the jails, for example, a drug overdose. What the source of the contraband is. If they can say all contraband was documented as having come in by a method such as a letter, they will have some support for they can, their conclusion. But if they can't identify the source in every case, they should be more thorough in looking for evidence. Until they definitely know the source of all contraband, screening and SCADA need not be seen as disrespectful. A result could show that in fact all staff are trustworthy. Uh, and on that example from the buses earlier, uh, an example of accountability, accountability is the ability to account. If someone is not searched, they can't be shown to be accountable. Uh, and as President Reagan say, trust but verify. Please do not accept the staff rep, response and keep working on this.
Thank you, Dr. Packard. Next, we will go to Youssef Miller, Mr. Miller.
Yes, uh, again, please don't accept this staff response. It is, it is absolutely ridiculous that we try to remove ourselves from a hundred percent contact. People are dying, we don't care about the comfort level of the staff when it is juxtaposed against the lives of these people. The families are not comfortable right now, there are families who are listening into this whole thing. And some of them are too heartbroken to even speak. They're listening in to us right now and they're uncomfortable. They feel a breach of trust and they feel that there's something that needs to be done. Of course, law enforcement is going to tell us nothing to see here, as they've done in recommendation after recommendation after recommendation, nothing to see here. We don't want to do it, let's move on, but we need clerk. To stand fast and make sure that they, the impress upon them how important it is that we make a hundred percent contact. When it comes to these, uh, lives in custody in the influx of these drugs. It seems to me that once we started pushing back with, against the law enforcement, saying that they may be responsible for bringing in drugs. It seems suspicious that the number of drug deaths started slowing down to a crawl. When we were having almost two, two a month at, at one time. I'm not saying that anybody's responsible, I can't point a finger to anything. But I think that we hit a, a nail on the head and we need to keep moving forward to make sure that everyone is accountable. And this transparency is not going to harm anyone, it is not the enemy. It is something that can make sure that we can, um, confidently say that no one is bringing in these drugs.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we'll go to Jennifer Schmidt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, ma'am.
The first woman that spoke said it very well when she said, um, a breach of trust is somebody laying on the jail cell floor dying. My dad laid on the floor in his own feces for fifteen hours, neglected. That's a breach of trust. A breach of trust is when I go to the hospital, they tell me he's under arrest. My first thought is at least he'll be safe. What a mistake that was. That's a breach of trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Delaney, actually, there are two additional requests to speak.
All right, we'll do those and then we'll go to, uh, club members.
Jennifer Martinez.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, touching back on the breach of trust, um. You know, we do, we do trust these medical professionals with our lives, with our family members. And it is upsetting that they take advantage of those that are, that they silence us. And, um, I think my first hand experience again was that Alvarado, when a, a guard from Donovan was there and he witnessed what was going on. And for the first time in my life, I was scared that he literally turned around and walked away. And I knew for that moment what it was like to be a prisoner, that there was, nobody was going to do anything about it. And, um, again, till this day, I don't know where he is, if he's alive or dead. And, and they're, they're breaking our trust and, and we put our lives in their hands and they take advantage of us. And they continue to take the, the insurance money, but they leave us untreated. I mean, he's, he's suffering from so many things that I don't even know what to make of, of it. The, his charts are being manipulated, his information's being, um, altered. One minute he's very ill, suffering from all kidney failure and then, uh, we take him to another hospital and all of a sudden he's hundred percent healthy. And we're, we're being just confused and duped in my life, uh, I, they discharge us again without papers and I'm sick and bad for the next two days. My mom has been sick two times this month and she's sixty years old. I mean, I don't know what, what, what they did, if it was COVID or, or something terrible and our lives are being, um, just. Taken advantage of here and they think it's a joke and it's very unfortunate, these people do need to be held accountable. And without retaliation, without punishing us for just asking for the basics of just wanting help from the people who are supposed to provide that help. They need a valve to help the sick and make us well, that make us sicker or punish us for, for being upset. Uh, of taking advantage of us when they have the power, they are, they have the power. And I'm at their mercy, we're all at their mercy and right now, I don't know where he is. I'm, I'm documented as his emergency contact and nobody has called me, nobody has told me anything and he's been there since the seventh. And I'm documented as emergency contact. But they were more than happy to take, you know, bring this up for the insurance money right away. But if they were opening up those files, they would see my name too. I don't know if he's alive or dead at this moment. And again, like I said before, uh, I'm, I'm fearful of calling the police because the last time I called them for help. They ended up trying to write me a citation instead of helping me get him into seek medical attention. This is where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Ms. Serna.
Yes, the breach of trust was, was broken and defiled when my daughter Lisa Serna was in the jail for five days. Being vi- a video monitor twenty-four seven for five days. Twelve seizures within those five days, no one was calling nine one one. As she banged her head on the concrete floor, the day she died, they walked away. Left her there dying on the floor for a whole hour as the video shows. The one that we watch of her dying for that whole hour, deputies were walking by the, the door. How could they have not seen her? Let's talk about the breach of trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Delaney, I see no other requests to speak, but you have four board members.
Okay, great. We'll start with, um, Ms. Pintar.
I believe Mr. Ware had his hand up and since I've done a lot of talking tonight, I'd be happy to wait until my, um, board colleagues have a chance to speak.
Okay. Mr. Ware?
Ms. Pintar, it's all, it's all good because I know you and I are all about the truth. Cause like this board here, so I, you know, I didn't consider it a radiation piece. But other than that, man, I am just very. But other than that, man, I am just very, very, this was a no-brainer to me. I, I thought the sheriff department would jump at the chance. And I know there's rank and file that would jump at this chance to be tested, to be searched every day because they want to clean up their own jails. They want to clear, clean up anything. They don't want to have any kind of doubt. So I'm very disappointed in, in, in this response here. I mean, talk about trust. I trust that when you're searched, you will have any paraphernalia that you shouldn't have. That's what I trust. So I, I don't know. I'm just disappointed. I, I mean, I, beyond words of speakers. Man, they're, uh, uh, absolutely right. This is a, this is a great opportunity for the sheriff department. At the very least, when we talk about radiation, we should have at least random searches of, of staff. At the very least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Okay, I'll go to, um, Mr. Brown or Dr. Brown.
Yeah, basically, I'm, I, I wanted to agree with, um, Mr. Ware. I think that we owe it to the public to, uh, uh, persist and to go back to the sheriff's department and ask that they reconsider this because, you know, if they don't want to search every employee coming into the jail, then maybe they could have some random searches, but they need, somehow they need to be searched. We need to be, the public need to be able to trust that public servants, they're being paid by public taxpayers' money. Uh, so I think we need, we need to do all we can to ensure that drugs are, 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 things that could harm the inmates are not brought into the jails by the employees. Yeah, and I'll yield back to the, to you all.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kina Yoo.
Uh, Paul, I'd like to formally request that we resubmit this exactly as it is, without changing it to be uh, random searches. The reason being, I am not insulted when I walk into a courthouse and I have to go through a machine and be checked. I am not insulted when I go through the airport and I am checked and, and verified. I am not insulted because I understand that it is there for safety concerns. And it is there because everybody, including myself, who has gone through multiple background checks, is just to be considered. I shouldn't be exempt from anybody else and I am extremely concerned that those two responses basically stated that any police officer that goes through a background check, whether it was recently or thirty years ago, should not fall under the same guidelines that the rest of the population does. So I formally request that we resubmit it exactly as is.
Thank you. Pastor Spriggs.
Uh, Ms. Kina, you took the words out of my mouth. I was gonna say the exact same thing. I would like to resubmit as is, period. We go through the airport. It doesn't matter who you are. We all get searched. So, are you back?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'm also extremely disappointed and, and I agree with Mr. Ware. If they're worried about the, uh, radiation, use the dogs. Um, I spent an entire lifetime in the military and I went through continue, continual background investigations that were updated, uh, periodically. Um, you know, uh, in order to have certain clearances, you have to have polygraph. Uh, and this was ongoing. I had to urinate, uh, in the bottle and be tested. Uh, and I wasn't offended by all of that. I was demonstrating my integrity. Uh, and I think that there are officers, deputies that, that would be more than willing. Uh, some of them I know because they're former Marines would be more than willing, uh, to demonstrate their integrity. But to take the integrity issue and put it back on the public saying there's a breach of trust is absolutely disingenuous, extremely disingenuous. And I, I agree, we need to resubmit this. And if they're worried about radiation, use the dogs. They have dogs. Drug dogs. And they get to sniff everybody. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorely disappointed and, and is just as upset about this as, as Mr. Ware is, uh, and Ms. Kina Yoo and had my say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Pintar.
Uh, um, just about everybody covered a lot of what I wanted to cover, but one topic that was not covered is that the sheriff's department, um, made the claim that they were concerned about radiation, but I hadn't see any, I did not saw, no, no report, no data, no scientific study to say that this was in fact dangerous to have people screened this way. We are all subject to it at the airport. Um, in fact, I believe that there, um, Mr. Parker and I were speaking, I believe that there's even an EPA study that says that the amount of radiation someone receives from one of these screening devices is extremely minimal. Um, so I, I would want, wanted to ask, um, Sergeant Tingley, is there a specific medical study that you are referencing when, or the department is referencing when they claim that um, these screenings would provide a problem, a, a radiation problem?
Ma'am, I cannot answer that question. I don't have that answer for you. But if you guys are going to resubmit this, then we can reevaluate it when you do.
Thank you. Great. All right. I think everyone has spoken, so I would like us to resubmit this.
Chair Delaney, there are two requests to speak.
Okay.
Miss.
From the public?
From the public, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Ms. Williamson, I, Ms. Williamson?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. This is the first time that I have come on CLERB and I felt like you heard us. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Next, we will go to Ms. Best, Mary Best.
Um, hi there. I would also like to echo what, um, Tasha Williamson said. Thank you so much. This has come up so many times and I just am, am very grateful and appreciative to CLERB for asking those questions and pursuing and persisting. And the question that I really do have, um, knowing that you all, um, have, have heard, you've gotten it, you're concerned about it, is where do you go? Where do you go if the department dismisses, um, the second round of this recommendation, not for random searches, but, but for searches of all staff? Where do you go? Um, and, and I don't know whether the board, I mean, I, I was sitting here thinking, I wish so much the Board of Supervisors was present at this meeting. Um, that, that where do you go if you, if they ignore or they dismiss, um, the second round? So that's my question. And thank you again. Thank you so much. This has been one of the best CLERB meetings I've ever attended. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a few more requests to speak now, Chair Delaney.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller.
Uh, yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Again, I want to thank, uh, CLERB as well. Again, I, I was thinking to myself that this is the first time the community as a whole and the CLERB as a whole been on the same page and it's really refreshing. Thank you so much for standing up and doing what's right. Not that you don't, um, deserve it, but thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And then next we will go to Jennifer Martinez.
Uh, yes, again, I also would like to just thank you guys for, for hearing me out and I come here on behalf of Damian Maple. I am his voice. I, I am fighting for him because I have studied a lot to where I wanted to be in law enforcement and even though he may not know, I, I put my life at risk and, and my reputation on the line, which has gone to the ground to fight for his rights as a human being, to give him a chance at a life that he has no idea that what could transpire. And it really does break my heart that these, um, medical establishments and law enforcement go unregulated and, and are allowed to continue to do this and have, it's unfortunate to hear every single one of you out there that is going through something like this. And it, you have no idea how great it feels that I'm not alone. Uh, this has been a very horrible, um, extensive two years. And, um, I really didn't know what else to do. Like she said, where do you go when law enforcement disregards you? Where do you go when medical staff doesn't want to help you? Um, so I think you guys today, uh, it gives me hope that something can be done. Thank you. We need reform.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. And Ms. Martinez, if you, if you would like, you can always reach out to me. Um, my email address is on our website and I maybe I can point you in the right direction for the California Department of Corrections or RJ Donovan or Alvarado, any concerns you might be having outside of the sheriff's department, uh, purview. Uh, but regardless, the comments you're making about healthcare and whatnot, we, we appreciate, of course, and thank you. Uh, at this point, I don't see anybody else, Chair Delaney, as far as members of the public.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Brown, do you have, have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, we, uh, is this in reference to only deputies being a, a surveil, a check for drugs? It should be every staff person regardless of who they are, I believe. Uh, law enforcement, medical, everyone. I know we don't have jurisdiction, but I would, if we can, and if, maybe I should talk to the board before I break this record, I would suggest that we amend it to suggest that everyone going into the jails. Everyone regardless.
That, that is what the recommendation does say.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Um, if there are no more comments, again, I'd like to, um, have this resubmitted. Um, counsel, is there anything that we need to do to resubmit?
Your board can take a vote to, um, authorize Paul to do that.
Okay. Um, do we have to agendize it to a different meeting or can we do it based on, on it being on the agenda tonight?
Can do that today.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion then? Uh, I'll make the motion. Okay. Tim Ware, okay. Do we have a second? Nadia?
Brown, I second it. Okay.
We have lots of seconds and a thirds and fourths and fifths. So I think everybody, all right, that being the case, do we have any other discussion? Okay, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chair Delaney. I, 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 I'd like to just say a couple things on it.
Sure.
Can I do that? I, look, I, I wasn't on the board at the time that this case came before the board. Um, but when I read through the response and hearing the concerns of the public, uh, one question that I would have is that the, the department was very clear on their concern about the stress on staffing and how this would impact staff. If the concern is staffing, I'd be interested to hear, uh, how we can increase funding to help ensure this. And that's a comment I think that we should share with the Board of Supervisors to increase funding, I think, to say, hey, how do we, uh, encourage staff? But until I see that in the recommendation, I, I, I just cannot, I can't, I can't support it. So that, that's where I'm at with it, uh, for the moment. But I, thank you. And I know the motion's on the floor, so I just want to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Pintar?
Uh, Paul, maybe you can answer this question, but I believe the Board of Supervisors recently did increase funding to the sheriff's department in order to address these very issues. And it was a dramatic increase, if I'm not mistaken. So that should not be a reason for not supporting this.
It, they did, uh, allocate additional funding for additional body scanners.
Right. Yes, that was just recently, correct?
Yes, and that included for additional staffing in order to man, to person the body scanners.
I believe that is correct. Yes. Okay, so, uh, any other discussion before, uh, Pastor Spriggs takes role? Okay.
Chair Delaney, oh, sorry.
Yes.
I saw a public comment.
Oh. I ca- see, I don't, I apologize to the public. I can't see public, um, on my screen. So I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Parker, can you see who?
I, I can. It's.
Can we, hold on one second, though. Just a matter of procedure. Can we, can we have public discussion when we're in the middle of a motion?
Public comment should come before a vote, so.
Okay, so.
Ideally, it would have happened before the motion was made, but I think it should be.
Can we, is it okay? All right, good. All right.
If, if I may, Chair Delaney, the person who was, uh, was wanting to speak, uh, had already spoken about this topic.
Okay.
Already, uh, is my understanding, but, and, and now the hand is gone, so.
Okay. Thank you, uh, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Sorry about that.
All right. Pastor Spriggs?
Okay. Uh, Eileen Delaney?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pintar?
Yes.
Pastor Robert Strays Jr. says yes. Andrew Hayes?
No.
Dr. Arlie Brown?
Yes.
Nadia Kina Yoo?
Yes.
Bonnie Kink?
Yes.
You want some?
Ariana Federico Mondragon?
She's not present.
She's not? Okay, thank you. Tim Ware?
Yes.
And G.I. Wilson?
Yes.
That concludes voting.
Okay, motion carries. Um, Mr. Parker, if you can prepare that and send it over as you do on the other recommendations, that would be terrific. Thank you. Um, and now let's go to the white supremacy and extremist groups.
It was a, this was a standalone recommendation, not case specific, that, um, it was based on, uh, some some trends that, uh, that the country is, uh, apparently seeing and, and something that the FBI had indicated that white supremacy is a national security threat, white supremacy and law enforcement is a national security threat. So we made a recommendation for the department, actually made this recommendation to both the sheriffs and the probation department for, uh, basically to create a new standalone policy procedure that captures the following or words to that effect. Employees shall not participate and or associate whether in person, electronically, or via social media with groups or individuals who espouse beliefs which discriminate against an entire class of people, typically for their immutable characteristics. Such participation or association undermines credibility and legitimacy of the sheriff's department and creates doubt that all communities will be served equitably. The sheriff's department response is that they have several policies already, specifically their associations policy, section two point nine that prohibits this type of behavior. So as they, uh, say that that policy prohibits it and then another fact, uh, they're not going to implement this specific policy. Another factor that they used in considering the recommendation was the passage, recent passes of Assembly Bill six fifty-five. Uh, this was signed by the governor on September thirtieth and becomes, uh, it became effective nine days ago, ten days ago as California Penal Code, section one three six eight zero. This law requires public agencies employing peace officers to investigate current and prospective peace officers' engagement in hate groups, participation in hate group activities, or public expressions of hate as specified. It provides that specific findings of those investigations would constitute grounds for denial or termination of employment as a peace officer. The passage of the law both predates and exceeds the requirements of CLERB's policy recommendation, rendering our recommendation moot. And to be clear, I'm not going to make a recommendation in which I know that there's a law or I'm sorry, an assembly bill in process. So from now on, when I make these recommendations, uh, these stand, these standalone ones, I'll make sure to search whatever is currently out there in the bills. But it seemed to make sense to me at the time based on the trends that, uh, have been pretty obvious nationwide. So with that, I kick it back to you, Chair Delaney. We do have one request to speak.
Okay. Let's go to that request.
Actually, we have two. Tasha Williamson? Are you there?
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I wanted to just say that, um, the sheriff's department, uh, is a, um, billion-dollar industry. Um, they have a lot of money. I do not think that they need any more money. And I think that they definitely need to, um, increase the policies uh, for, uh, discriminate racial discrimination. Now, what we're finding with, um, other local law enforcements is that, uh, with the release of Senate Bill sixteen, uh, there have been a number of law enforcement officers that are still employed after using the derogatory N-word. One particular officer, uh, had the nerve to say he was a cop who kills the N-word um, when he was off duty and drunk. So I'm not sure how many sheriff's departments records, um, have been released uh, indicating whether or not there was racial discrimination, because it is my understanding that from CLERB, um, there have been, uh, no sustained findings of racial discrimination, uh, with the sheriff's department. But we do know that sheriffs, uh, do have racist employees and that they have made, uh, racial profiling and racial discriminatory, uh, statements, uh, to community members that have gone unfounded. So I hope that you will push back again, um, and ask them to, uh, make stronger policies, uh, and procedures and that, uh, termination, termination, uh, is on both. Whether it is racial discrimination, they need to make examples of people, uh, who believe that hate is okay as a public servant, that biases are okay as a public servant. That being in a gang while you target gangs is okay as a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Yusuf Miller. Thank you. Next, we will go to Yusuf Miller. Mr. Miller?
Yes, um. The fact that we have a state bill that was passed, it, it is, it is not an excuse for us not to have a public policy here locally. We're talking locally where the, there was a, a study done on the Sheriff's Department, which revealed that blacks are, are multiple times higher stopped by, uh, the Sheriff's Department than our white counterparts. This is local. And also the same study happened with the police department and the same results were happening. This is local. So these are local things and local issues that we know, not only from the community's reports, but also from other officer reports that these are, things are going on. This is a stance that we need to take as a, as a, a. Support for people of color in this area that have been experiencing racism throughout, not only from law enforcement, but from the wider community. That when it comes to people who are charged with carrying a badge and a gun, that they're not one of those same people who have been traumatizing the community throughout San Diego County, North County, East County, South County, everywhere in between, in education, in employment, in, in so many other sectors of the community. We have ample data locally that's, to suggest that, uh, black and brown people are overpoliced. And from what source? We need to check to make sure that that source is eliminated in a policy that will get them fired, will get them arrested if it goes to that level, that we, they are held accountable for these, these actions and these affiliations. We cannot say that just because there's a state, uh, bill or ordinance that that is enough. We need a local demonstration, a local policy that says we are not having it here in San Diego County where there is a rampant issue. This, um, I'm also with the San Diego Anti-Hate Crimes Coalition for the county. And I can tell you, there is an issue in San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further requests to speak, Chair Delaney. In, in reference to the racial discrimination for the public and for this board, some members who were not on this board and now it's a different administration as well, the Sheriff's Department, we did earlier this year make those recommendations. We talked about before the seven recommendations to reduce, uh, reportedly racially disparate policing practices. And, um, six of those were not implemented and perhaps that's something that this board, uh, would want us to look at again, um, or, or whatnot, but that's, I just wanna give the background that we have addressed that issue at that time. Uh, and with our eyes open to moving forward to, to address what is, is most appropriate that when it comes to discriminatory, allegedly discriminatory practices, and I'll defer to the board for further guidance. Chair Delaney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Parker. Maybe, excuse me, at our next meeting, you could, uh, update us on what exactly the Sheriff's Department policy is on this particular subject. Um, okay, let's go on to sustained findings. Um, do you have anything you would like to report, Mr. Parker?
There is one sustained finding response that we received and for the members of the public and for new members of this board. Every time that this CLERB sustains a finding is technically considered a disciplinary action, so much so that the employee to, uh, that is sustained against has the ability to appeal the finding to the Civil Service Commission within 15 days of being notified of CLERB sustained finding. In this specific case, this was against the department in general. Uh, it's about not being allowed to shower for, for five days and it has been shared with the command staff for determination of appropriate administrative action internally. So that everyone knows it's been brought up earlier, I think Ms. Williamson brought up about, uh, about what we can and cannot do as an advisory agency. We are not, you know, we cannot recommend that anybody, I mean, we could recommend, I guess, all we want, but we don't have access to disciplinary history to make recommendations. All we can simply do, even though our rules and regulations allow for us to have that, uh, all we can simply do is recommend the use of progressive discipline, which is what we do. When we send a letter to the department, whether it's the sheriff for probation, and we get a response saying that they have moved it up to chain and that they're aware of the situation now that we brought it to their attention and they act, uh, internally accordingly. So that's where we stand with that. It would take, uh, some kind of change, of course, as, as been bantered about and, uh, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute, uh, but that's where we are. So that's all I have for you, Chair Delaney. And we have one pending sustained finding response, um, that was just sent to, uh, to the Sheriff's Department last month, but that concludes my executive officer report.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to point out that we are, uh, I'm sorry, Paul, did I interrupt?
One request from the pub, or one.
Oh. Okay.
Ms. Williamson. Tasha Williamson.
Thank you. Um, yes, I was, I wanted to know a little bit more about, I, I don't know where to go for the appeals. Uh, you were talking about officers can appeal within 15 days. Um, what is the process? I guess if you can tell the po- public what the process is, uh, for the, the appeal process. Um, after the 15 days, how long does it take? Is there, is there more stuff that has to happen? How long does that take? And then also regarding the rules and regulations that say you, you as a board should get, um, their other, uh, history of, um, I guess internal, um, complaints or internal discipline, uh, that has happened with the officers. Um, if the rules and regulations say you should, then I believe that you should be fighting to have those if you don't. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Williamson, and we will be, uh, we'll be talking a little bit more about the rules and regulations here, the revision. We would like to have a special meeting at the end of this month. We'll talk about that here in a bit to discuss the rules and regulation revisions that were, that we're going to, to do. And then, I'm sorry, Ms. Williamson, I have spaced completely the first part that I was gonna answer. Um, can you briefly, can someone just briefly tell me again, uh, cause it was a specific question?
Civil Service Commission Appeals.
Thank you very much, uh, counsel, and I apologize, Ms. Williamson. I was, uh, looking up the other, the rules and regulations when you started to, to mention that. So the, there are 15 days. Once we notify a, a member that we've sustained a finding, they have 15 days to consult with their representative or their union representative or legal counsel to file an appeal with the Civil Service Commission. At that point, we as CLERB, um, we basically have to put that case on trial. It, and we use outside counsel, not county counsel. We use outside counsel to basically re-litigate, for lack of a better term, the case in front of the Civil Service Commission, who then has the authority to say, hmm, we were right or we were wrong. And so that, I hope answers the question and, and fulfills, uh, uh, you know, uh, educates the public about that process. Chair Delaney, back to you.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that our closed session is timed certain at 7:30. However, if, uh, our board doesn't mind, I'd like to continue. We only have a few more subjects. I, I'd hate for the public to have to wait for us and then come back. Um, are we good with that? If you could just kinda, okay. Counsel, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So we'll go on now. Anything else you wanna add, Paul?
No ma'am.
Mr. Parker?
I said, I'm sorry. No ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a, just a brief, uh, I'd like to, again, thank the members of the public, uh, for your comments and your participation. Like to welcome Sheriff Martinez. Um, I look forward to the CLERB working with, uh, with her on important changes and I, I'm hopeful that we can, can see those changes. Um, as other comments have been made, um, I invite Sheriff Martinez to attend our CLERB meeting. Uh, I'm also hopeful and, uh, I encourage the Board of Supervisors, uh, to approve, uh, CLERB's oversight on medical. Um, this will allow us more thorough, um, allow us to be more thorough in our investigations and our cases. And, um, with that, let's go to new business.
Chair Delaney, Chair Delaney.
Yes.
You're interrupting.
Pardon me?
There is a request to speak from a member of the public.
Okay.
Um, this was one that, that looks like I didn't see or whatnot, but, uh, caller from the 858 area code, uh, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Um, you're muted if you're on the phone. Yeah.
Caller from the 858, Erica with 8706 is the last four. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes. Last chance for the caller from 858 with the last four of 8706. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to address the CLERB. Chair Delaney, back to you.
Okay, thank you. So our new business will be, first is the continuation of teleconferencing meeting option pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. Um, and just to let everyone know, February will be the last month that we can, um, have virtual meetings. Um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And that would be Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair Delaney, if I can read the, um.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, so the appropriate motion would be to find that CLERB has reconsidered the circumstances of the state of emergency and that state or local officials continue to recommend social distancing.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Um, all right, so we have a motion by Dr. Brown. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion? Do we have any discussion from the public? All right.
Katie.
All righty then, in that case, um, Pastor Spriggs?
Yes, okay. Sorry about that. Uh, Eileen Delaney?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Ann Pintar?
Yes.
Pastor Robert Srees Jr., yes. Andrew Hayes?
No.
Dr. Arlie Brown?
Yes.
Nadia Keen, are you?
Hey?
Yes.
Okay, Bonnie Kink?
No.
Okay, Tim Ware?
Yes.
And G.I. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, motion. Thank you. So we have now, um, voted to continue for the next 30 days, virtual meetings. Um, our next business is a schedule of a special meeting, kind of like a, uh, community forum, if you will. And we need to do this prior to 2/29. Um, we had discussed on January 31st, and I will turn it over now to, uh, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Chair Delaney. The reason that there, there are two reasons for a special meeting at this point, though, the primary reason is because you folks just voted to continue virtual meetings for 30 days. And that's great, but our next regularly scheduled CLERB meeting is not until February 14th, which is, uh, 34 days from now, if my math is right, Mr. Ware. So it's 34 days from now. So we would need to have this meeting again to do this vote again, as to whether or not you folks wanna have that through March. So that would be number one reason for the special meeting. But number two, we're in the process, as we've talked before, uh, we're in the process of revising our rules and regulations to capture many different things. Um, things from the state audit, some ways that CLERB is, is, is handcuffing itself with its one-year time limitation. Uh, to include jurisdiction over medical personnel, to, to, to basically do the next step forward, right? The next step to get jurisdiction over medical personnel, uh, medical service providers to attempt to get jurisdiction over all Sheriff's Department employees. Potentially do the same thing for all probation department employees. So we, I had a meeting with the chief probation officer and the assistant chief on Friday to discuss this very topic. Also to look at the, some issues brought up by the San Diego's for Justice, but more, uh, more relevant or in addition to that, uh, ways to perhaps make this board more, uh, to increase its authority. I mean, it seems like the public is clamoring for that. It seems like, uh, certain members of the public and this executive officer believes that, uh, that this, we deserves a stronger civilian oversight entity, hands down. And so we're gonna make some proposals, uh, in the rules and regulations and then see, see, see where we can, what we can do. We'd like to provide those proposed rules and regulation revisions to the CLERB board, but also to the public. So, and then have this meeting so that the public can weigh in, that have the opportunity to see what we're, we're recommending and to weigh in on what we're recommending as it begins its journey through labor relations, meet and confer all the way to, uh, CLERB approval and then subsequent Board of Supervisor approval. So that's where we stand right now. That's the reason for the meeting. Chair Delaney, I think you just said that you'd like to propose the special meeting occur on Tuesday, January 31st. And I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, at 5:30 PM, um, and if that is agreeable, I'd like to have a motion. That's Ms. Pintar?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Dr. Brown, is there any discussion? Is there any public dis- uh, yes, Mr. Ware?
Uh, 5:30 on January 31st. I may be a little late, but I'm good, I'm good to go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ware.
And power to the people.
Okay. Any other, just any public, uh, comments on this?
Uh, one.
Okay.
Ms. Williamson? Ms. Williamson?
Uh, yes, um, I, uh, maybe this is something that you and I can talk offline about, uh, Mr. Parker, but I wanted to know more information about the, you did mention a community forum, is that correct?
Yes, I, I mentioned that. This would be part of it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that, no, that's okay. Um, we want public input on our rules and regs.
Okay, awesome. Will we also be able to come to the special, uh, the special meeting that, um, Mr. Parker was talking about?
And that's, that would be the purpose of this meeting. Yes, of course. Most welcome.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And power to the people.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, Pastor Spriggs? Are you there, Pastor Spriggs?
Y- yes, I am. I'm trying to pull up the list. Hold on. Okay, here we go. Eileen Delaney?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Ann Pintar?
Yes.
Pastor Robert Spriggs Jr., yes. Andrew Hayes?
Yes.
Dr. Arlie Brown?
Yes.
Nadia Keen, are you?
All right.
Yes.
Bonnie Kink?
Yes.
Uh, Tim Ware?
Yes.
And G.I. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Motion passes. We will have a special meeting on January 31st at 5:30 PM. And, uh, Mr. Parker will send out the, um, agenda and all the pertinent information. Right, number eight, unfinished business. Um, we want to update the completed investigation of CLERB case 20050. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Parker, um, to do A, B, and C. Um, Mr. Parker?
In reference, thank you, Chair Delaney, in reference to item A, it's a very unusual step we're taking right now, but we're going to give a, a public overview, uh, condensed public overview, a redacted public overview of this one specific circumstance. It was the, uh, shooting of Nicholas Bills that occurred on May the 1st of 2020. If this board recalls, we, we, this person, this person is no longer a deputy. And because that's the case, we didn't have jurisdiction to look at this unless the CLERB board said, "Look at it." So when we brought this before you, you said, "Yes, look at it," for the purpose of seeing whether or not any policies and procedures had been violated, if there's any, uh, not violated, but if there are any policy and procedure recommendations to be made, uh, to perhaps prohibit something like this from occurring in the future. In consultation with Nicholas Bills's, uh, mother, uh, who agreed with this review for that purpose solely, uh, that's what we did. So, so that the public is aware, we looked into the circumstances. And this was, uh, to refresh everyone's memory, on, on May 1st of 2020, about 5:50 in the afternoon, a male who's, who was at the time a deputy sheriff employed by the Sheriff's Department and another deputy would walk into work at the San Diego County or the San Diego Central Jail when they saw Nicholas Bills escape from the backseat of a California State Park officer's vehicle while I was waiting outside of the San Diego Central Jail Sallyport. He began to run, apparently unarmed, from the scene. He had successfully slipped a handcuff from around his left wrist prior to exiting the vehicle. As he ran with a handcuff around his right wrist, the person who's long, uh, long, no longer employed fired five shots, striking Mr. Bills four times. The other deputy walking with the former deputy at the time of the incident testified that he planned to chase and tackle Bills and so no, saw no reason for any type of other force. Mr. Bills was transported to UCC, UCSD Medical Center and despite all resuscitative efforts, was pronounced dead at 6:19 PM. Medical examiner's office, uh, personnel determined via autopsy that the cause of death was multiple gunshot wounds. On May 5th, 2020, this person resigned from the Sheriff's Department. On July 13th, 2020, he was arrested and charged with second degree murder. On January 7th, 2022, he pled guilty to voluntary manslaughter, admitting during his pleading that he quote, "Unreasonably believed that I or someone else was in imminent danger of being killed or suffering great bodily injury." or suffering great bodily injury. I actually, but unreasonably believed that the immediate use of force was necessary to defend, to defend against the danger. I therefore, acting alone, personally used my department-issued firearm to shoot Nicholas Bills, ending his life." On February seventh, twenty twenty-two, this person was sentenced to one year in jail and three years probation. That's the background, and that's what happened. So in the course of reviewing the circumstances surrounding this, this was, this unfortunate situation happened pretty soon after the penal code had been changed. And it had been changed based upon an assembly bill that had gone forth a couple of months before. And that assembly bill was California Assembly Bill three ninety-two, and it subsequently amended the penal code sections one ninety-six and eight thirty-five A. We've all heard about this bill. One of the things it did, one of the things it supposedly did was to increase the level needed to use deadly force to necessary, right? Before, I think it was reasonable, but now necessary. Interestingly enough, though, when the bill was being drafted, necessary was never defined, and it was actually taken out at the last minute. But, you know, to probably be, you know, litigated at a later time. Regardless, the San Diego Sheriff's Department, prior to this incident, updated their policies accordingly to reflect the changes that AB three ninety-two brought forth. So those policies, their use of force policies were changed appropriately. Also, during the course or after that, I asked some clarifying questions, and these questions are, I'm able to give you these answers publicly. In the course of investigating this, I want to know if this person was in uniform and armed while walking from the courts building, where he had changed into his uniform to the central jail, where he was assigned to work. Technically, he was off duty. He had changed in his uniform, he was in his uniform, but he was walking off duty. This is important, because when we look at the policy about firearms and, and whether on duty or off duty, what you're supposed to do, he was off duty, but the other thing that is very important was, he was a law enforcement deputy sheriff. He, he was assigned to central jail at that time. He was not a detention's or court services deputy. Uh, this is important, as his role, as in that role, he of course was permitted to carry a firearm. And he received firearm training that was standard for all law enforcement deputies sheriff. So he was in, in compliance with that training. Everything the department, it was, it was what the department had, they did what they were supposed to have done. They did not revise, add, or eliminate any policy and procedure based upon the actions resulting in Bill's death. However, what they did do was provide training after the incident. Several types of training after the incident. The training division created a video pertaining to the use of force, deadly force against fleeing felons. Quote-unquote fleeing felons, reflecting the current language in that penal code that was updated with AB two. The takeaway from the training was that the use of deadly force against fleeing felons is basically illegal, except for the most extreme of circumstances, and would likely result in some kind of criminal prosecution against a deputy if they did so in violation of the law. The second training item that the department implemented was scenario training for all newly assigned detention service bureau and court service bureau deputy sheriffs, specifically covering outside facility contacts. So for deputies assigned to daily deployment positions as perimeter or transportation or security rover, as there's a high likelihood, they will initiate a consensual encounter with the public. It will observe a law violation and act or assist law enforcement with, with incarcerated persons. That training talks about all the legal aspects of pedestrian and vehicle stops, included but not limited to critical incidents, contacted cover, consensual encounters, detentions, arrests, search and seizure, radio usage, to and from work encounters, off-duty involvement, applicable policy and procedure, and use of force options. With all the changes, with all of that, with the changes that they made to the pol- to their policy and compliance with the law before the shooting, the subsequent training they did to their staff after the shooting, there were no policy and procedure recommendations that I could come up with. I want to bring that to you, to tell you that's the outcome of what you folks have asked me to do and what Ms. Bills has asked me to do. We'll deliberate the case for findings in closed session. Back to you, Chair Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Do we have any public comments? I appreciate your in-depth research on that.
Thank you. We have Ms. Williamson. Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Williamson.
Uh, yes, I found that the U.S. Department of Justice did a publication called COPS. It was a hundred and sixty-four pages. It is on their website. Three point one five talks about investigations when the officers are no longer employed. And it says that consideration should be given to investigating the complaint as if the employee were still employed. So I hope that, yeah, I'm kind of concerned that you all didn't have this in- investigated and went over with your board to have findings during the time that this incident occurred. Not only did this officer shoot Nicholas Bills, a human being, he shot him in the back. He shot him as he was running away, in the back, at point-blank range. So I hope that you will, if you do not have a policy, that you will consider the U.S. Departments of Justice understanding of investigations with employees who are no longer employed after they, there is a complaint or a use of force incident that happens and that you will consider to, and should be investigating any complaint or use of force as if the poli- if the employee was still employed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Delaney, if I may, part of the rules and regulation revision may address something along those lines. To be clear, in reference to this, to recap this, to put the cherry on top of this, we couldn't do any investigation into this unfortunate situation because of the criminal prosecution that was occurring. We were not, we did not get any of the materials until after the criminal prosecution had been completed. At that time, within a few weeks, at the very next board meeting, after getting the materials, is when I brought it to you folks and asked you whether or not we should continue and move forward with it, because he's no longer employed. Now, to the public comment, it is, uh, it is CLRB, CLRB has the ability every single time. If someone is not currently employed, CLRB, just as you did in this case, has the ability to say, Paul, have your folks, all of you do the investigation, bring it back to us. You have the ability. It's already there. It's just a matter of educating. And, and, and as was said earlier, this is not CLRB-able. You know, we're doing everything we can within the standards and guidelines we have, and we should utilize every, every tool we have to do these investigations if CLRB so desires. Back to you, Chair Delaney.
Thank you. All right. And number B is your update authority, executive officer, to work with county staff to pursue legislation and/or add to a policy to the county legislative program in support of increased transparency in civilian oversight of peace officers and custodial officers. Mr. Parker?
Chair Delaney, thank you. This is something I've been rallying for since I've been back as the executive officer. It's, it's really ridiculous, quite frankly, that we're a civilian oversight entity and the laws in this state don't prohibit the transparency the civilian oversight entities were created to, to have. Uh, yes, we're independent, but how? You know, what, what, what good are we if, if the public doesn't know what we do? We're looking at ways internally to push up against the rules, the law, okay, to not cross the line. Uh, but what I just did right now for Mr. Bills' case, I don't see why it couldn't be done, you know, for other cases as well. And that's something that we're looking at. It's, it's, it's a touchy situation, because we certainly don't want to violate any laws. Uh, but until such time as the law changes, I think civilian oversight entities in the state, which are becoming more acknowledged as a viable option, they're actually being placed in state statute now, on par with internal investigations. I think that's something that we should continue to push. And this county, for the second year in a row, has added civilian oversight, increasing the transparency of civilian oversight of peace officers and custodial officers to its legislative program. That's great news. So let's see what happens during this legislative cycle. So that's the update for B. I see one request to speak.
Okay.
Ms. Williamson?
Yes, I was looking on the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board, and I'm just wondering if you all have released your sustained findings in accordance with Senate Bill sixteen? Because that bill does include, I believe, citizen oversight boards as well as EEIO, uh, EEIOC and EEOC, I believe it is. And then also the law, local law enforcement. So that would be one way for you to make public the sustained findings and their records for officers with misconduct, conduct. I'm not sure if you deal with officers that have sexual misconduct, but that is one also, and then use of force.
So, thank you, Ms. Williamson. In reference to the public comment, we are actively working with council right now, in reference to SB fourteen twenty-one and SB sixteen, what we can release, what we should release, and what we cannot release. Uh, the certain categories that was mentioned, absolutely. If we have sustained findings in those, we will make sure that we're complying with the law to do so. And I can provide an update on that at our next meeting. So I think that was it for B.
Right.
For C, which is the expanding our authority, actually, talked about it already, right? We, we initially were looking at expanding the authority to medical service providers for the reasons that we weren't getting the big picture for deaths. We have now expanded our request to expand to include all employees of the sheriff's department based on Sheriff Martinez's support of that in an October twenty-fifth debate, when she was running for sheriff, based on her statements and her, her support for that. I met with the chief probation officer and assistant chief probation officer, as we said last week, and it looks like that's probably something I'm going to move forward with them too, but obviously I want to give them the opportunity to, to apply. But that's where we are. You'll see what we're trying to do come January thirty-first. Uh, we'll release the proposed rules and regulation revisions that'll capture all of these, those items specifically in C. And we'll discuss them at this special meeting slash town hall on January thirty-first, five thirty.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Our next item is board member comments. Any comments from our board members? Ms. Pintar?
Actually, I have a question for Sergeant Tingley, but I.
Can you hold on to that until we get to the?
I realized that as soon as I raised my hand, so sorry about that.
That's okay. I saw, Mr. Ware?
Uh, just a question for Mr. Parker. Who's the moderator for January thirty-first town hall?
Unless Chair Delaney tells me, otherwise it'll be me.
Yeah, I'd like Mr. Parker too. We're, we're going to treat it pretty much like a regular meeting, questions, answers, all that. You good with that, Mr. Ware?
Yeah, you're a great American, Paul Parker. You're a great American.
You're too funny. Ms. Keen, are you?
I'd like to reiterate my request for Chief Martinez to attend and respond both to the things that we submitted, including the LGBTQ requests on how inmates are processed with male trans. I know that I've been requesting this since October, but I feel at one point, we will actually receive her.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from our board members? Let me go to the sheriff's probation liaison query. Pastor? Pastor Spriggs?
Yes. Uh, for Mr. Parker, uh, when you stated about the fifteen days, would that be fifteen business days or fifteen consecutive days?
That's a great question. My understanding is it's calendar days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pintar?
Um, this came up in one of the cases we reviewed this month. I have a question regarding the depth, the sheriff's department's policy for retaining jail surveillance video. Sergeant Tingley, can you tell me what the policy is for how long jail surveillance video is retained? It, according to what I read in one of the reports, it was only retained if it was related to a critical incident. So I have two questions. One, how long is all the surveillance video retained? I think maybe it said six months. And two, who determines what a critical incidence is?
So that's a great question. I, I think I will need some time to, to research that and get back to you. So if you could get Paul to write that up and send it to me, I'd be happy to provide that answer to you on the next meeting.
That would be.
I want, I want to make sure that the information I'm providing to you is, is correct.
Well, I, I, thank you. I appreciate that. And I would also just ask that the two timeframes should be aligned. So, uh, to me, it seems it's logical that the video should be retained at least as long as the length of time people have to file a complaint. So I hope I, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but from my reading of the report, the video was only retained for six month, six months, yet a detained person or an incarcerated person has up to a year to file a case with us. So the two should align. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I hear, I hear you, Claire, and you make total sense. So I'll make sure that I get that response to you next meeting, and I'll work with Paul on that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pintar. Because I was just going to say that, based on us meeting. Yeah, the, it should align, and I understand also that based on the age of each facility, the timeframe may be different, that the videos are retained. So if maybe you could give us the different facility time that they do retain, that'd be, that would be interesting.
Yes, I, I'll, like I said, I'll, I'll work on that, and I.
Great, appreciate it.
Paul, and we'll, we'll get that all.
Thank you.
To you by next meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else have, Mr. Ware?
No, I'd just like to say, uh, appreciate Sergeant Tingley being in that seat. It's not always easy to be in that seat, because this is definitely personal from the public standpoint. Those are lost loved ones, and we can get personal as well, but appreciate you being in that seat, man, where you do work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else have any questions? All right, that being the case, council, could you please read us into closed session?
Well, Ms., uh, hold on a second, if you don't mind. Um, I, I do have a couple of questions to answer from last month, or at least one, and if you want, I would like to provide you with that. That answer. So last month, during the meeting, it was asked, basically, if an inmate is going through the intake process and gets asked if they're doing drugs, and the inmate is not willing to speak in the initial process or saying no, how much time goes by before they go back to the inmate to assess? So I just wanted you to know that questions are asked on intake. Um, and with the questions that are asked, as long as the inmate or incarcerated person is, is cooperative with those questioning, based on their answers that are provided to the nursing, if they meet the qualifications for some type of drug assistance or help, then that's entered into a dashboard. And that's, uh, when it's entered into dashboard, it'll be in there for a minimum of seventy-two hours. And a doctor is the only person that can remove them from that, and they will be seen every day until a doctor removes that from the system. Now, if they're not answering the questions because they're uncooperative, they will revisit that based on the symptoms and/or charge, et cetera, that they see as they're evaluating the incarcerated person, and they can still enter them into the dashboard for a medical doctor to review. So I just wanted to provide that answer. Um, and then also, Paul Parker pretty much answered all the CLRB responses, but I just wanted to, our policy recommendations, and I just wanted to go over some of those numbers. So last year, there was forty policy recommendations provided to the sheriff's department. We did respond to thirty of them. We have ten that are remaining, that are being evaluated as we speak, and seven of those ten were given to us last month. Um, so we currently have ten, and we'll be working on those as well to get those back to you as soon as possible. Um, we did just send out a training bulletin on one of the policy recommendations, which was case twenty-two zero fifty-eight. And that one was CLRB's recommendation to create a training bulletin on the subject of handicap parking and law enforcement to include, but not limited to temporary and permanent handicap placards and parking restrictions for distribution to all patrol deputies. That was sent out today. That training bulletin was sent to Mr. Parker and hopefully sent to all of you for, for your review. Uh, but that one was done and completed. So we're working diligently on getting these answered for you and provided to you, so that way you have them. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much, Sergeant Tingley. Appreciate that. Mr. Parker?
Two things. Thanks, Sergeant Tingley, for the overview, and that's the one policy that we mentioned that they provided right before the meeting, and so that will. We mentioned that they provided right before the meeting. And so that will, that was not shared with you because it'll be an attachment to next month's meeting. Uh, so we'll, we'll do it that way, which is uh, which is uh, good. So you'll get all the information at that point. And then finally, there's a request to speak from Paloma Serna.
Okay.
Uh, well, actually. Perhaps not anymore. Oh, yes, there is. Bear with me here. Ms. Serna.
Hi, yes, thank you. You know what, Michael Tingley, I hope I pronounced your last name right. You know, I do appreciate you being there. You know, um, and I'm sorry, you know, that you will take the heat, you know, because you are. Right now to me, you know, the face of San Diego Sheriff, but don't ever take it personally like to you directly. Because I know you weren't there when my daughter um, died in the jail. You know, but you know, when she was in um, being processed through the. Through the booking, she admitted to drug use. And she was there for five days. And she was not given not one withdrawal medicine at all. And so she died tortuously. You know, she was given paper cups, water paper cups only. Even she never went before a judge. But but she did have a court date and the judge um. Requested that she be seen by a doctor, which she never did. For her withdrawals. And the only medication that I'm aware of she was given was. To take care of her vomiting. That was it. And you know, so. You know, I see, you know, it is very necessary for inmates to occur, you know, to be able to. Admit to their health issues. While being booked, but when they are being honest about it, they're still being denied the care. So I don't know. I mean, we need something going, you know, something has to be fixed there. With the communication with the, with the, with the deputies, with the medical staff there because she was denied everything. She would, you know, we did watch five days worth of the videos of her uh, death with the DA. You know, and it's just, it's awful. You know, it's very awful. She, like I said, she did not receive not one. Um, withdrawal medicine at all, and she died because of that. You know, for the lack of um, treatment. But like I said, I don't, don't take anything personally, you know, to you, but you know, I have to address that, you know, to you just because. You know, what you had stated. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Serna. And then also Chair Delaney, it looks like we have two, actually three additional requests to speak for item. Number ten, which is the sheriff probation liaison query.
Okay.
Tasha Williamson. Ms. Williamson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I I I might be a little off topic, so please forgive me, uh, but I I concur with the last speaker. Um, and everything that she said, uh, and then I, you know, as uh, Mr. Paul Parker will know, I have had to send in several emails uh, to. Help uh, prevent um. Uh, deaths or uh, injuries uh, to inmates. Uh, those uh. That information is actually getting, getting to me uh, via the jail. So people are making phone calls outside to get help. Uh, and get someone's attention on what's going on on the inside of the jail. And um, that is um, very concerning for me. Because if they didn't, inmates who don't have the reach outside to connect to someone like Tasha or Brother Yusef or. Uh, someone from pillars of the community or Racial Justice Coalition, um, and many others. Um. They can't get the help they need. They're not identified. Um, I had to reach out at times at two o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning, twelve o'clock in the afternoon, all hours of the day I'm contacted. To say this person's had a heart attack and they're putting him on this. They're not providing medication. They're not doing this, that, you know. This person is 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 injured, has a brain injury. Um, so it's very concerning to me. Um. About how negligent the sheriff's department is and not caring for people. Uh, we also talked about. Making sure that the sheriff's department had access to medical records. It is nothing for uh, the sheriffs to work with um, uh, medical institutions so that they have access to those records so that they can better care for. Uh, the inmates that they are responsible for. Um, I should not be the person that's sending medical records to the sheriff, to the interim sheriff Ray and Paul Parker. On behalf of the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to. It looks like the eight-five-eight number is attempting again. Let's try one more time and see what we can do. Call for me five-eight with eight-seven-zero-six is the last four. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Alicia Donnelly. Can you hear me?
I can. Your time starts now.
All right. Uh, I'm also known as Sandra Hoyt. I just recently got a divorce. My ex-husband, I had taken all the money away, my cars, everything. So I was forced to try to get a ride one day. In near my home, I was hitching a ride, not understanding or knowing that it was a misdemeanor. I had finally given up after about forty-five minutes trying to get a ride and had started to ride, walk home. When I was accosted by San Diego police. There were five policemen there with three cars. Before they even questioned me, they put handcuffs on me and made me face away from them. And started questioning me left and right because they had received a complaint, they said, from someone that I was obstructing traffic. I was not. I had in fact been walking along the road for five minutes when they accosted me. They did not see anything. They then determined that I was bipolar. Out of whatever reason they had, being the medical doctors that they were not. And they told me that I was being abusive and I should stop cussing at them. I did not resist arrest and they decided that they should bring me to county mental health. Which they did and again questioned me. And when they did not get the answers they wanted. They told me if I didn't cooperate, they were going to either put me in a straitjacket or inject me with drugs. So I did cooperate and they still injected me with drugs. The next thing I knew, I woke up the following morning, still at CMH, had to wait three hours before a doctor came to my aid. And then they released me and sent me home in a cab. That was the end of everything. I had no one to call. I was not granted an attorney and I was not charged with anything. And I am complaining and I am very angry. I am seventy-four years old. I do not look at. Most people think I'm fifty. And there was no reason for them to arrest me. And all the time that they had me in custody, they were telling me that I was not under arrest. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hoyt, uh, Ms. Donnelly. Just for the boards and the public, just so everyone's aware, that when we have folks that are complaining about other jurisdictions and and they have filed those complaints with us and signed it under penalty of perjury. We refer them to the appropriate oversight entity with that jurisdiction. And communicate as such to the folks that are making those complaints. So, and then finally, we have. Jennifer Martinez. Ms. Martinez.
Yes, hello, um, I, my heart breaks to hear her story because it it all shocks me to hear that. This is considered normal. I mean, again, I speak on behalf of Damian Maple and I can't tell you the countless of times. That Alvarado Hospital has allowed Damian to discharge himself when they knew that he was not in the right cognitive mind. He was severely dehydrated. He had. Just overdosed on fentanyl of some sort. And you know, they they need to acknowledge as healthcare providers, they need to be tolerant, not only. The fact that drug addiction is a mental disease. It is a disability. And they choose to um, mistreat these individuals when they are weak. They knew that I was his only family, his only contact. And they wouldn't, they should say, at least she got a cab. He didn't even get a cab. He was discharged at four in the morning. Uh, made to walk three to four miles on multiple occasions. A- a- and he had a dead cellphone. Being a new, uh, you know, person in San Diego, uh, being in a box for twelve years. It consider him getting lost and walking even further. He's always getting lost. He has no directions. And it is, it's terrible that in the middle of winter, um, he's, he's walking for miles and they know he's suffering from liver kidney failure. Or he, you know, all these things. And they say, oh, well, he's an adult. And he can discharge. And this is inhumane acts where they continue to torture him and it goes deeper because they've known him. Even further, longer than I've known him because they have been catering to this prison for. They have a contract with them where I see them for years. So with these prisoners coming in and out, and and it does pain me that these individuals don't have a voice. And these hospitals or these caregivers are go unregulated and and there's no nine-one-one for the hospital. There's no one I can call when he's there and. They're giving him hydrocodone when his kidneys are failing. They're giving him uh, milk of Malaysia, all these things that are causing. And hurting his kidneys even further instead of helping him, they're hurting him. And it scares me to know that my mother used to work there twenty-five plus years ago and would tell me the bias and the discrimination against. These people who are suffering from drug addiction. And mental illnesses. And they say, oh, don't help them. They're a lost cause. It. No one's a lost cause. And and it's very unfortunate that they violate our First Amendment rights as a human being to have a voice. And I'm just trying to show him that he does have one. And um, it's just heartbreaking to know that this is actually a common practice and it's disgusting on several occasions. Um. We went to Sharp Gross Mart. I wanted him to get blood work done because Alvarado was denying his own medical information against him. And they just urine test him. And we drove there together. And he, he walked.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Chair Delaney, back to you.
Okay. If we have no other comments, then um. Counsel, can you please read us into closed session? We'll take a five-minute break or just do we need ten minutes? Five minutes, okay for everyone? Okay, five-minute break and then we'll meet back here at uh. Eight, eight-twenty, let's say.
Pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-seven, this board will convene into closed session to consider item eleven on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.